This is Jason Anderson, Chairman of Killenly Town Council, and we're calling a special town council meeting to order. For all call purposes, all council members are in attendance except for Mr. Randelski. Mr. Gambatista is with us remotely. At this time, we'll move on to item three on the agenda, citizens' statements and petitions. Ms. Chlorea, did we have anything submitted by email?
We had none received.
Thank you. At this time, if anyone would like to come up and speak, just state your name and address. We just ask any comments be kept pertinent to the items on this evening's agenda. And let the record show that Mr. Randelski is here at 7:01 PM. Last call for public comment. Seeing no public comment, we'll move on in the agenda. Next item up is item four A, consideration and action on a resolution appointing an acting town manager. Can I get a motion to adopt this?
Second.
Motion was made by Ms. Barclay, second by Ms. George. Ms. Chlorea, would you mind going over this?
Sure, so I understand the executive search committee has also been evaluating for interim or acting town managers upon my departure on May 5th. And so the council has, my understanding, come to an agreement with regards to appointing Francis Conroy, who is also Buddy Conroy, our Public Safety Administrator. So this will be an acting town manager position effective the day after my departure, May 6th, and utilizing the existing town manager salary as the interim salary during while performing that position.
Thank you. I will open up to comments, questions from the council.
I've known Mr. Conroy for a very long time through various places and activities that are, my children have taken part in. I know he's been very involved in the community. I know he has a very diverse background in the state police and administrative posts that he's held and operated and actually put together a lot of stuff on the slide that wasn't prepared. And I think he's going to do just fine. I know that he's got a good rapport with the existing town employees and department heads, and so that's going to be really integral to keeping the town moving forward.
Thank you.
Mary, was that supposed to be two weeks prior to you leaving?
No, you can't have two town managers acting at the same time. You have to have one that is the primary. He will be participating in meetings to basically transition, so we'll be managing through that in that timeframe, so.
So it still had like a two-week shadow?
Yeah, so he already started that today.
Oh, perfect.
He did a bunch of Capitol stuff today, but yeah, so I'll be working very closely with Buddy over the next two weeks. And, you know, I've also, you know, let him know that, you know, upon my departure, if he ever needs to give me a call, it's not a big deal.
Thank you. I would like to add that I was very impressed with his interview with his background, his experience, and I agree, I believe, he's going to do a phenomenal job as our acting town manager.
I second that.
I'll knock on his door if I have to.
(laughing). I will say, I really appreciate Buddy being willing to step into this interim role and, you know, kind of assisting keeping the ship moving forward. Thankfully, we have a really great team that is a support team for him. And so, you know, and he has already developed all those relationships. But I, you know, clearly, I know the shoes and I know what the job entails, but I greatly appreciate his willingness to step into that position.
I agree, and I feel he'll also be a big asset. I know we were looking for an interim town manager, but having an active town, an acting town manager, someone who's already worked in the town, knows the staff, knows the community, knows what's going on, will be a huge asset when we do bring in a new town manager to help with that transition, to get the new town manager up to speed and still be here and available. Whereas an interim, we may not have that level of support from the new town manager. So thank you for coming forward. Any other comments? Seeing none, all those in favor say aye.
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 Opposed? Abstentions? Motion carries unanimously. We'll now move on to the agenda. The.
Congrats, Buddy.
Thank you.
Moving on in the agenda, next item up is item four B, discussion with fire marshal regarding Killenly High School access road.
So while Randy's coming up, I did provide you a copy of the, so this was really brought to a request because there was a lot of conversation at the public hearing and a lot of questions about the access road and some of the questions around the fire marshal's orders. So Randy and I were talking about it, and we thought it would be good to just kind of bring forward to you the access road itself and what the criteria is, what it is that the order is actually requesting, to kind of provide some clarity around that. So what's, I gave you guys copies of the, that proposed athletic fields access roads that the school's been working on, the two different access roads that they were contemplating, as well as a copy of, a lot of you were asking about the original lower access road. So if you go to the GIS map that's dated March 9th of 2024, it shows Pusinella number 268. That is the parcel that is right on Putnam Pike. We have a 30-foot wide easement along that AT&amp;T access, the AT&amp;T line. We, the town has a 30-foot right-of-way on that for an access road that then directly joins to the high school property. You know, this kind of hearkens back in the day. And add to your, our question, I have not had an opportunity to go dig through the old files up on the second, on the third floor about if there were any original plans that show, that actually showed the old, the old, old, original. But I can tell you from the conversations from back in the day when I first got here, it was contemplated that that would be the start of the emergency access road, and then it would traverse onto the high school property from there. But I wanted to let Randy kind of give you an understanding of what an emergency access road threshold is and kind of what you're looking at before you. Go ahead, Randy.
Is there a way you can turn it up on the screen?
We don't, I don't have them electronically to stick up on the screen, so.
Good evening. So back in May of 2021, we had a substantial forest fire in the back of the Killenly High School, which prompted the Attawagan Fire Chief, Chief Matt DeRozier at the time, to utilize a tanker shuttle. During the operation, there was substantial water supply issues. There were hydrants down in the lower section, which we were told had adequate pressure. Unfortunately, a regular water line didn't, was better than what they had there, so we had to bring trucks down the access road, down to that lower section. In doing so, we almost rolled two fire apparatus due to the width and the angles of the road. Chief DeRozier at the time approached to me, launching a verbal complaint, saying, is there a way that we could start a way of getting access down to that part? So I approached Mr. Angeli at the time, who was the superintendent, and started the verbal conversation with that going forward, had a couple of meetings in his office, which brought me to probably about March of, a month prior to submitting the letter to Mr. Angeli. Mr. Angeli approached us, Mr. DeRozier and myself, and says, I sort of need something in writing at this point because I want to present it to the Board of Ed, because looking at it, it's gonna, it's gonna cost a significant amount of funds. That prompted the April letter from my office to Mr. Angeli. Going forward, Mr. Angeli then, as you all know, departed, and then doing so, Dr. Nash became the superintendent. I worked with Mr. Vassar, who is the operations and for management for the Board of Education, and in doing so, spoke with him numerous times, asking him, you know, progress, have you been working on it, what have you been doing, trying to get an update on it? At that point, I always got, I was working on it. Never saw anything from any design plans or any path. So, which prompted me to have a little bit more regard to send a second letter with a cease and desist. Prior to that, however, KB Ambulance had a couple incidents on the access road during, providing coverage during the football games, and it caused damage to KB Ambulance's rig trying to come up the access road. The problem with the current access road is, is that it's too narrow. Trying to get into there, getting in one direction is fine. Trying to get out on a one-way and try to navigate an apparatus around over the curb at the back of the high school poses a significant problem. As you all know, apparatus are not small, they're usually long, they're usually large. The, going forward, Dr. Nash has been working with a consultant and Mr. Vassar as well. We have had numerous meetings since then. The Board of Education and the high school have developed a temporary plan to keep people off the road during events. In doing so, it has alleviated some of the congestion on the road, but the main point of the problem is, is the width of the road is too narrow for the large apparatus and equipment that goes down there.
Randy, what's the required width of an emergency access road?
So in the, in the code, the Connecticut State Fire Code uses NFPA 1. There has been some variations between the International Fire Code and the NFPA Code. Connecticut has eliminated pretty much the ICC Code, which is the International Fire Code's version of it, and has gone to the Fire Prevention Code, which is NFPA 1. In doing so, they make a broad range of a width of a road. Obviously, the town specs would be 24 feet with curb. The fire department access road usually goes no less than 20 feet for a couple of reasons. One, a ladder truck can be up to 40 feet long and have a wheelbase of 280 inches to 300 inches and can weigh up to about 80,000 pounds. Trying to navigate that on a 10-foot road or a 12-foot driveway is tough as it is. So they make it a standardized width of 20 feet. With that 20 feet, it also guarantees that any type of ladder truck, and not just in this situation, but any other situation, the outriggers will go out between 16 and 18 feet to provide adequate support for their ladder, ladder operations or tower operations, depending on which truck is on scene. So that's the general reason of why 20 feet is usually the minimum standard of what they're looking for. And then an obstructed view of 13.6 for height, that is the federal motor carrier's recommendation for height for anything, for an 18-wheeler, because it's 13.6 is the max height. So it would be pointless for them to go any lower. So basically, you're creating a box 20 by 13.6 is what it comes down to. Also, when it goes to the gradient, there's also a gradient. Each apparatus, when it's designed, or at a factory, an engineer does a cramp angle, which is the angle from the bumper to the rear wheel. So you can't have a driveway too thick, you can't have a driveway too steep because it will bottom out. A classic example in town would be Cook Hill and Valley Road. That intersection, when the town redid that a few years ago, that was brought into consideration. And it's, it's close. You can see the gouge marks in the road, and I'm sure anybody that's gone by it can see it. So there's standards for it. The authority having jurisdiction in the code leaves a variety of different options and amendments that I could do if I would wish. My problem with that is, is if I make an amendment, if something happens, I own it. So that's why I try to stick to the code mandates, which is 20 feet by 13.6. It can be challenging, it can be obnoxious, and depending on the situation, but it also meets the minimum requirements of the code.
Randy, what's the material required? Is it, you know, can, can they do gravel, is it required to be asphalt? What's the kind of minimum standard, if you will, for an access road?
So the code does a certain percentage. I can read it to you if you would like, but basically, in a nutshell, it comes down to, it has to improvise the load of the heaviest apparatus in town, which would actually be a ladder truck, is gross between 66,000 and 76,000 pounds, depending if it's Danielson's tower or Davil's ladder truck. The tanker trucks in town hold 3,000 gallons, some of them gross out around 68,000 pounds. So as long as the improvised load of the foundation which you brought on, which is the road, can support that type of apparatus without sinking, that's what they recommend. In doing so, it doesn't have to be paved. They, they actually say that there's, the intent of the code is not to say that you need concrete or asphalt, you just need some type of base that will support the weight of the apparatus.
So that road is required to be cleared throughout the duration of the year, though, correct? So like during snow, it would have to be plowed in order from, to maintain access? And so I imagine that a, obviously, a paved area would be easier to maintain than, say, if it were a gravel or a Millings type of?
That is correct.
Okay.
The current access road at the Killenly High School that was designed, which is on Mr. Pusinella's property, if I do recall, is just a, basically a 20-foot wide gravel plot of dirt. And they plow it in the winter. There is also an access gate due to school security. You know, they recommended that you have a gate to prevent people from going into that direction.
So when they're.
In the wintertime, plowing, it's hard with gravel. Obviously, asphalt is a better alternative. Unfortunately, my office doesn't, we don't dictate what it has to be, it just has to meet the minimum requirements of the fire code.
And so what, one of the, one of the proposed access roads that they were looking at was utilizing the existing, part of the existing access road to the well. No, that's not, yeah. So that's the, so that's the original one, right? See where that green dotted line is up on the screen? That is the AT&amp;T right-of-way on the lower lot, that lot right there. That's where we have the 30-foot wide easement on the side of it. And that was originally thought to be where we would go with the rear access, right, to the field. So it would follow that up to kind of where the wellhouse is and then loop around as the mouse is pointing out. And in doing that, you know, I mean, again, I don't want to undermine what the Board of Ed has already spent money on and evaluated with their, with their engineers and their architects, you know? There's many different things for consideration. One of those things is the topography, the grade. There is a fair amount of grade differential from the front lot, that front lot property all the way to the back, and so that has to be taken into consideration. So what they're, what they have proposed, there you go. Jonathan, you are stellar at this. So you can see, there's a lot of topography change there. So what their current proposal is, is to use that wellhouse access road, not there, go the other side, the wellhouse. Yeah, there you go. The wellhouse access road, and instead of stopping at the wellhouse, they're going to curve it around and they're going to go, yeah, they're going to hug the toe of that slope and they're going to bring it around to the back, right? So that's, that's essentially what that, that, that other access road looks like. And then the, the second one that they proposed is basically improving the existing access road, widening it, but it still doesn't take out that awkward turning angle at the very top, and it doesn't provide rear turnaround access to the rear fields, right? So that's the other major challenge that we had with regards to the rear acts, the rear fields, the other practice fields, is that, you know, you get a truck back there that has to respond, there's nowhere for it to turn around in those back fields to get them back out of there. So that's basically what they were looking at doing, that's what that access road project has been. Again, we just wanted to kind of give an opportunity to highlight from the fire marshal's standpoint what the concerns were, why was this even a thing? And what were, what are the fire marshal's by code requirements are? And again, we recognize this is not part of the budget, right? The Board of Ed isn't proposing this as part of the budget. They're looking at alternative funding, the non-lapsing, and they're also looking at, you know, they're still in the evaluation phase of what is this project, right? They're still in that engineering phase of the, of the project to determine what are they really proposing for a project? But just given the amount of conversation and concern there was from the public, during the public hearing, and the questions that I, you know, I felt the council was asking thereafter, I wanted to, you know, kind of give that space for the fire marshal to just kind of speak in general with regards to the why behind this and what is the, kind of the base criteria to better understand that.
So also, to elaborate on Ms. Chlorea's point, the, the initial concept of the road that is currently there as we know it, does go down to the wellhouse. When the building was constructed during the high school process, it was a non-inhabitable, it was basically a wellhouse. It was not occupied, there has nothing, it was maintenance more than that. The road criteria for that is fine. When they added the concession stand and the population of the ball field started picking up in popularity, there has to be a staging area at the ground level for an injured player or in the event something happens. Anybody here knows the football field, the only way to get down to the lower section is that pathway. So it makes a more common sense approach of a staging area for fire and EMS. The Board of Ed has recently done fireworks episodes during home games in the playoffs, which requires, you know, staging area for that as well. So the parking lot, so to speak, down by the tennis courts in the wellhouse, has increased in its popularity and business over, over the years of the high school, which has now made that road pretty much outgrow itself. The only way to get down there for players, for anybody, is to walk down that road. I talked to Mr. Bogger, who is behind me today, we are going over incidents that has also cost KB Ambulance money for accidents that have caused by the ambulance trying to climb up that road. I believe we're safe to say we're into three, three accidents within five years, but there could be more, but we will both agree that there was, we know at least three that has happened because of that road. The, the road would be fine if they could widen it up to 20 feet, but the turnaround and the approach angle for making an apparatus go around that way, it seems to be the problem. Also in the code, you got an aggregate building that's over 400 square feet. I believe the concession stand is around 1,300, and the wellhouse, even though it's unoccupied, I believe, was 1,000 square feet. So you have, you know, that much square footage and building that if something happens down there, you gotta be able to get access to it. The last point is, is the access point that goes from the concession stand down to the soccer fields and the ball field, that corner right there is actually where, excuse me, where we had the biggest issues, because the, the angle for the apparatus, we were actually rolling it. There's, there's a culvert there, a flat-top basement, that's probably, I would say, three feet submerged below the grav, the road access line. There it is. So that's where we almost lost the trucks. Also, and to point, this ain't the only cease and desist letter I have sent out in doing so. I did send one to Ms. Chlorea for the Owen Bell Park for the same, for the same issue, and that was back in May as well. I also received complaints. Unfortunately, it's great that the sports are doing well and popularity is picking up in the town of Killenly, but unfortunately, parking is not picking up. So those, those are my justifications for the road. I'm always willing to work with everybody, I have no problem. I don't want to spend that much money, I'll be honest with you, but at the same time, I don't want to tell somebody's kid down in the soccer field that we can't get a truck down there.
And so, to date, there has been no events that have been canceled because of the cease and desist. What has been required is that they communicate and coordinate through, through the fire marshal's office in order to make sure that there's appropriate staging locations, that there's appropriate controls around that access, the current, the current narrow access. But again, it becomes more and more challenging with the growing popularity, which it's a double-edged sword. It's really great, we get a lot of people into the community, however, it does put a strain on the emergency service in that access. But there's not, we have, it's not like they haven't been able to hold events or games or things like that. So I just wanted to make sure we were clear on that.
Mr. Randelski?
From your standpoint, it's the access road is the critical path, but parking is a totally separate issue. So with the road that they're using now, well, you, we don't have car access going down that road by the concession stand because there's no, well, maybe that's not under your purview, that may be more with Nancy. So if someone wants to attend a function down at the lower fields, they've got to walk a significant distance. And I kind of brought that up when the Board of Ed was here the other day, throwing out, well, access road plus some parking.
Yeah, so that's, that has been one of those kind of long-term goals, and I'm kind of speaking for the Board of Education, but I know that that's been something that's been communicated, was getting, you know, that ADA access and that lower access, the parking access to the lower fields. So that way, they could have, you know, those that have mobility challenges be able to access those rear fields more readily. Because, yeah, right now, in order to be able to get down to the concession stand area, you know, you gotta get down that access road, which, you know, so that is something that has been articulated in the past by the Board of Education about wanting to create some, you know, lower ADA accessible parking and access to the lower parts of those fields. And the plan that they have here does create, you know, the, the plan that they're looking at does incorporate like sidewalks, concrete sidewalks, that would potentially, you know, meet those ADA requirements, right? So, you know, that's, the sidewalks are part of that more, they're not really for emergency access, but that would help create some of that.
But the sidewalk, from what I, I don't know that much of, I've very seen very little of their proposal, but the, for sidewalk ADA compliance, where they're looking at at the end of the parking, oh, but I mean, even their, their new proposal, that's out more north.
Yeah.
That slope, I don't know, looking at it, seems like it's awful steep for ADA compliance.
Well, again, that proposal that they have, and again, I want to make sure that I'm clear that, you know, they're still in design, they're still in that evaluation phase, so some of that can change, but this is, you know, there is a lot of fill that would have to take place in order for that installation to happen and in order for it to meet appropriate, you know, the appropriate grades for ADA. See, this is what happens when you have a planner driving the GIS, he starts putting all the filters on, right?
I was checking.
Yeah, I know, he was just checking it. I saw, I saw the top, the top of map go up. So you, so yes, they would, the grading, the ultimate finish grading would have to be compliant, would be compliant if they're going to be putting a sidewalk in. And that, again, there's a lot of fill, it's not like it can go on the sloping the way that the, the ground is right now. There, there is a lot of fill that would have to take place.
So that's where looking back where the original AT&amp;T line is, and then we do have an easement, we did, I found the easement today that we do have it, in addition to the paperwork that you sent. Now, it's interesting that Pusinella's were talking about, well, we gave you an easement in the day, now we would like an easement so we can log in in the back.
Yeah, and that's a separate conversation.
Right, right.
That's a completely separate conversation. But again, you know, that, you know, I did have, you know, on the town side, you know, when we were talking with the Board of Education, we did, you know, do a quick look at, you know, the ax, connecting the access from that, that, the, the other parcel that we have the right-of-way up and around, and the, the topography is still challenging. There is, you know, you know, work that would have to be done, it's not a straight shot, it's not easy, it doesn't, there's still cuts or fills that would have to take place. So in order to get the correct sloping or the requirements for the fire departments, you would have some work to be done there, too. So, you know, again, none of it's easy. None of it's like, oh, it's just, you know, cut a road over here. It's, you know, the site and the topography of the site is challenging for that.
And also, I'd like to elaborate on your, on your comments, sir. Usually with the sidewalks and stuff, yeah, you're meeting the width of the ADA, but you can also drive a vehicle down to the bottom of the base, so the sidewalk would not really be known void on an ADA access, so it just has to meet the state criterias for the width. Also, when you get down to the bottom, we did approach Dr. Nash and asked her that, you know, with the apparatus turnaround, you're looking at 100-foot cul-de-sac at the bottom or a Y-type diagram, which would be 60 feet deep by 26 feet wide to accommodate a truck to be able to pull in one direction and back on the other. A cul-de-sac would be at 100 feet radius, yeah, radius around, excuse me. With doing that, we pitched a point to Dr. Nash that, you know, while you're doing all this, you got 100-foot cul-de-sac, it might be easier at this point to, you know, promote access down to the ball fields for two reasons. One reason would be to utilize the fields down in that area, and you already have the equipment there on site to go move forward. The other point would be to alleviate the congestion at Owen Bell Park for the Board of Ed to use their ball fields and actually use the ball fields up there. So I'll be honest with you, if I had a kid playing in that ball field, I wouldn't want to walk the hell out all the way down there, I'm sorry.
Well, those are the comments that I got, not, not a lot, but I got it once in a while. You expect, no, I am the grandfather of the kid, and I'm expected to walk all the way down to the bottom. Well, I didn't know there was a non-compliant thing, so I'm on board with what you're saying, we need the act, we need. we need the, we need a better access to get all this stuff down there.
And unfortunately, in my aspect, I only care about getting a truck down there and turn around and getting back help.
Right, so the Fire Marshal is about emergency access.
Well, that's right.
Everybody else is talking about accessibility.
Once you start with that, we've got to go the next step, we've got to make it more amenable. But then again, too, the fields are not being, the fields may be used for practice, but Owen Bell Fields offer townwide recreation. Now, we're taking that out of townwide use because they don't have access to get proper utilities, people, whatever they need to get down to the fields.
I agree with that, but unfortunately, we're getting into the weeds on that subject, unfortunately.
So the rest of it, once you get started with this, you could make it, let's make it more amenable, let's make those fields more usable, take the load off Owen Bell, which is used excessively at this point. But like I said, that's outside of your, kind of outside of your arena.
The staging area where the concession stand is now is adequate for what we use for, for the events that are held at the high school. The plans that were submitted here were submitted by the O and M Director beginning of the week, or last week, my apologies. I submitted a response based upon both roads. The longer road would have to extend alongside the football field all the way to the concession stand to make it adequate, an adequate road, which is, you know, something that was considered as an add-on. It was a lack of communication on, I believe, all parties. So that, it's going to cost probably more than the anticipated amount to go that route. Unfortunately, either way, it's not going to be cheap. Personally, I'd rather do it on a Saturday and bulldoze some trees and have some fun and then put some gravel on it, call it good, and then I wouldn't be here tonight. So. Is there any other questions?
But now, if you use a new access from the north going on the easterly side of the football field, then why, but what about, we need a turnaround down there, too, right?
Yes, the proposal in there was a Y-type or design, which would be, at that corner, it would be shaped up more like a Y, it would be a 60-foot each side at 26-foot wide for the truck to pull in towards the football field, back up towards the baseball field and be able to go back out that way.
Why would you need to back up, wouldn't you be able to just circle around?
Unfortunately, the road's not wide enough for that, sir. So that's where, in my-
The existing road?
Yes, sir.
You can widen the road, right?
Yep, and in my comments, I stated that the road would have to continue to the concession stand in my notes. I only did the plan review as submitted by Mr. Vassar from the engineer design team, which put the turnaround right at that corner. And that's where I stated that, in order to do that, you'd have to go all the way to the concession stand, utilize that parking lot to turn around and then go back the way you came.
So if you widen that access road that is there right now-
Yes, sir.
And you put another access road to the north of the field, you would be able to-
I believe the current road there, please don't quote me, but I want to say it's around 12 to 14 feet wide, but it's also burned angled, so it's a little bit of a drop-off, and then towards the football side, it's a little bit higher. I believe there was some question on the regulation size of the fields cutting in left or right by making that road 20 feet wide.
It's 12 feet wide. Thank you, Planner.
So to double, basically double that width is what you would look at, and with the regulation sized fields, that was a point of contention.
One thing I'd like to talk about on this, I know it's not so much related to you, but this project as a whole, looking at the amount of forest and land there is there, I think we could, well, Board of Ed could look into bringing a timber harvester to address the possibility, because you're going to have to clear a good chunk of that. And if there's sellable timber in there, that may be a way to offset some of the cost of this project as well.
Yeah, you know, that's definitely something that the Board of Education could consider, and that's something that I'm sure Dr. Nash will explore as far as potential opportunity there. I mean, just because we've, you know, we've recently done that with Chase Reservoir, you know, I don't know what timber is up there, and I don't know how, you know, recent it was that it was harvested, but, you know, it's something to look at at least. Whether or not that yields anything, you won't know until you get a harvester out, a forester out there to really identify that. But it could be a possibility, there is a fair amount of timber.
Yeah. The other thing I think about is, with there being the fire out there, how much of the timber's been damaged from that? Or even doing selective harvesting through that whole parcel, maybe worthwhile to cut down on the fire risk, I don't know, that might be something you could weigh in on, because that's more your department.
Given the type of vegetation in that area from the previous fire, and also with the gypsy moss that happened a few years back, there is some dry timber there, there's no danger to any structures or life property or personnel or anything out there, so it's more a containment at that point. That's the worst part about it, it's, when it goes, it's going to go, I mean, we can stop it at Blueville Mill if we wanted to, but that's pretty much what it is between here and there, is woodland.
But if anything on the northerly side of the football field, though, I don't know how exhaustive research has been done, but I'm hearing that there are wetlands, you know, so I don't know where that comes into play, how far those were evaluated.
Yeah.
Again, as I said in my comments the other night at the meeting, I'm getting, go down through the existing way, it almost seems like with the existing concession stand is, but that's going to be very costly, because you just really don't have this, we'd have to put a massive retaining wall up and something else to make that curvature.
And you can't correct, there's really no way to properly correct that main entrance. The entrance itself is a really bad angle.
Right, right.
And so that really limits, and that's why that one is really a constraining component to that accessway. And then as far as wetlands are concerned, obviously, any plans that are submitted for consideration will have to have their wetlands delineation on it, so that way we can see, because we do know that there is, you know, from back when we were doing the school, we do know that there are some wetlands in and around that area, but that wetland delineation expired, so they would have to make sure that they have their wetlands delineations on there to determine if they're crossing wetlands, impacting wetlands, or just within, you know, the upland review of wetlands.
I can tell you, Ed, having been at the football game, for many football games, I wouldn't want to be trying to take an ambulance up or down. It is improved now that they've closed it and there's no more pedestrians standing on that.
Oh, I agree, I was just looking at it.
And, yeah, it's a very slow trip down and around, and it's a significant drop-off. If they move just too far, that, those rigs are heavy.
Yeah. Also, in talking with the Board of Ed and Mr. Vassar at the time, we were also looking at how long of a process this would be. Mr. Vassar suggested up to a three-year span, where we're already two years into it. I allowed them two budget cycles to complete it, because I knew it was going to be a costly factor. They did approach the town and also with the Highway Director to look at it, and I can't speak for the Highway Director, but it was, it's a substantial amount of work that needed to be done. But the time constraint was, is on my part, and I own that, I don't want it to go stretched over a long period of time and then have something happen, and, you know. So I gave them up to two budget cycles to complete the road.
So what would you have to get, if on a northerly road, do you have to get to the concession stand? Is that?
Yes, sir.
Okay, you know, I don't know how far or what is, you know, do you stop at the other curb, well, that's, yeah, that's a long run.
And it's just a matter of, if you really wanted to be cheap about it, you leave the 12-foot there, you just put a gravel base on the edges and make sure that it's not going to wash away, and, you know, it satisfies my requirement of a 20-foot wide, you know, impervious surface that will actually meet the requirements of a fire apparatus. So I try not to be too picky about it, as long as it works, that's all that matters.
As long as they hold 70,000 pounds and-
Yeah, roughly.
Yeah.
Yeah.
And 80, 80 would be on the safe-
Eighties, the rough, you know, the federal motor carrier regulation is 80,000 for max weight, so.
Oh, there you go.
A tandem axle in the state of Connecticut is 52,000 pounds, unfortunately, fire apparatus are exempt from the weight rating, so there's no truck in Killenley that's tandem axle is probably under that.
And if we, if something's going on down there, I want the emergency vehicles to get there, minimum time, you know, I don't want them to have to do a three-point turn to get to where you're, no, no, I can't, I can't go that.
Unfortunately, the area has outlived its usefulness for what it was intended when it first opened.
And to your defense, too, I mean, when that school opened in 2010, there were three main things that we didn't have money for that we knew we would have to pay for eventually. One was the water line, one was a gas line, and one was an access road. So that's been 14 years, now 15 years, so.
All right, I can't speak for all the taxpayers, but I'm a taxpayer myself. It is a costly option, but, like I said, the alternative at the end is not well played, so, nobody wants to explain for something and how a sports athlete has an issue and we couldn't get to them.
Yeah. Human life is, there's no dollar amount to that.
Yeah.
I just got a comment on my phone, could we engage the National Guard to do such as a training exercise, exercise to build an access road? I don't know. Someone just threw that out to me, so.
Can I, I'll text your phone, Grandowski Brothers Construction can help out, too, as well.
You're going to be me with a shovel.
It's a good political point for your next election, so.
I have no idea.
I don't know, I, you know, just throwing that out while it's, while we're here, I mean, I, I think this is long overdue.
Ms. Glorio did bring out a point that the previous, the older section of the road, there are, I believe, ADA, possibly some ADA grants that could probably help out in that, but also you're going to be based upon some time constraints. So, I hate to say it's six to one, half to the other, no matter what you do, it's not cheap.
Yeah, not sure. So, again, I know that the Board of Ed is exploring all these things, this again is a Board of Education proposal and investment that they're looking at, but again, there was a lot of questions about that, and what was the, what was the, you know, requirements for the emergency access road and how it developed, that's why I had Randy come and just kind of give you more of that background, that's all.
Also, for the record, Ms. Glorio and the town have been working on Owen Bell as well, so I don't want to make it like I'm not picking at yous.
Keeps throwing me out of the bus, that's okay.
You're short-lived, so I'm trying to do my best.
Ah, thank you.
Well, maybe, well, ADA, is that, is that under your-
No, sir.
No, sir.
Okay, that's, so if the existing path down to the concession stand, does that meet ADA?
No, it's not.
Okay, now you just answered another, okay, all right, so that forces-
But it can be, for the right price.
Well, let's do-
Anything can be for the right price, come on.
Do an effort that gets all the big fire apparatus and the ADA covered in both.
Which is kind of what the pathway that they're trying to get it, all solved in one shot.
And then I guess, when, if I get comments, because I will say I am for a parking lot, additional parking down by the baseball field, that, so, but I got to get those individuals to come over there and say, that's what we need to help support this, and I just can't be the only one, they come to me and say, I'm their voice number, we need people to, a number of people to come forward and express that they would like this. And some of these people, they are, you know, you start getting my age and older and you want to see your grandkids playing, they're impaired, and they, you just can't drive down anything. So we've got to make it amenable to everybody involved, but I hope that, I wish that they would come to the podium and support that effort.
Well, and that was our previous conversation with Dr. Nash and Mr. Vassar, and about, if you're going to do this, the equipment's there, you're going to design, you're paying a designer now, Miles will look at, you know, best case scenario, design it the way you want it, and then nitpick it from there. So, and I believe they're chewing away at it.
I think the support's there, in two years, you better have it there on our plan.
Pretty much. So I just have a question. Somebody called me today and asked this, because they're concerned about this access road that's been kicked down the road. So is this a project that the BOE could have done with ARPA money, with the S R funds?
Unfortunately, I can't speak to that.
I don't know, I don't know, I would have to ask if that was, if that would be an eligible expense.
Can we find that out?
I would have to, yeah, I can-
Because we put it in a football field and used ARPA money, so I'm assuming-
Yeah, I'm not sure.
The emergency road would have been a viable option for those funds.
What issue dropped that date?
Right now, I do-
You have to put a date, I mean, that's the way it is.
I'm trying very hard not to, basically two budget cycles, if they can come up with a complete plan and funding-
Is that 2027?
Yes, sir. Obviously, it's over a million dollars and it's under 2 million, so it's-
And the longer it goes, the more expensive it gets.
Yeah.
Right, so.
I'm willing to hold myself out there for a little bit, but at some point in time, something has to be addressed. Anything else?
Any further questions from council? Mr. Gambit Houston, do you have anything?
No, but thank you very much for all the information, it's very insightful.
You're welcome, thank you very much.
So one other, well, it's not so much for him, but with the existing easement that we have from the other property owners, that will get us all the way to the further baseball field, or, I don't know.
So the easement that we have from the other property owner, only, the map is gone. It only, it doesn't even get you up to the, to the, to the school itself. So no, I mean, it doesn't even, it's, probably gets you about a third of the way there, and then you have a big chunk that has to cross the town's high school property. So there's only one current, the current easement that's there is only really kind of like the bottom third of the, of the access road.
Do we need additional easements to get?
No, you wouldn't need any additional easements, because we own the property.
Okay, that's what I'm getting at.
Right? It gets to our property line, and then it's all what we want to do, it's just, which, really what drives this is, what is the easier topography to navigate and install a road? Like, what's the most efficient and effective way to do that? And, you know, if you're going to be trying to put in also ADA access, then you probably do want it coming off of the high school parking lot area versus a separate parcel, you know, one or two driveways down, right? It depends on what, but it really depends on what's the most cost-effective way of getting that access in. So I know that they've been looking at those.
That's all my job there, right?
Yes, sir, it was, lots of it. We did a lot of blasting.
The upper road, Mr. Grandowski, is roughly 950 feet would be the total length of that road for the upper part, to make it down to that culvert, the basin there on the angle. The other road, I believe, is just a hair over 550, the existing road now.
Yeah, they're long.
Anything further? Randy, thank you for coming forward. Moving on in the agenda, next item up is 4C, Presentation and Discussion by Highway Director Regarding Pavement Management Program.
So Matt is going to get set up on this, so again, I know you guys are going to, this is impactful to the budget, so the town council has been continuing to invest in the pavement management plan. So it was requested that Matt was, if he was able to come and give a presentation on where are we, and, you know, where, what is our projection at this point in time, and so that way you have that as you go into the deliberations, so.
Hey, Matt, I want to say thank you for throwing this together quick, I know this was a last-minute request.
No, I'm glad to, I think it's important. I'll try to keep it short, I know you guys have your deliberations, so you can get started. This was a slide that I showed last year before the budget presentation, because we had talked about at one point, I was explaining that we had some heavy lift roads last year, North Road was one, and we had talked about front-loading our next couple of years, where it was still the same total. During the budget process, it actually got cut a little bit, instead of 3.2, it went to 2.2, so it was a little lower than our original 2.5 that we had talked about a few years ago. We were still able to make it work, we had some, this is an updated one for where we were last year, there we go. So we did end up spending 3.2 last year, we were able to utilize some money from the utility companies for permanent patches, as well as there was some tar money that we had from the state, and then Reynolds Street, that came out of the Reynolds Street project, so that was, that was good. So we were able to still do that and complete North Road in the full, because it was one of those I honestly thought about cutting it in half like we talked about, but I decided not to, I just felt like the town was going to look silly, kind of split that road.
Because when you split, remember, if, kind of peel back a little bit with North Road, if we were to split it, it was really leaving the middle section of North Road undone, right? So it really would have felt very incomplete and unthought out to have done the beginning and the- to have done the beginning and the end, but left the middle completely. So that's why he opted to.
But it worked out, we ended up still roughly with the, when we upgraded the PCI, or when I added everything in for PCI, we ended up pretty much where we had projected to. So, it's a little, I tried to make it as simple to follow as possible because it was in budget year of '22 where we started to do the 2 million, but we were holding a year, we wanted to lag, so I didn't have to wait till July to have the money. It was to the next year have the full money. So technically, the money that we're gonna be using this construction season is the 2.25 from '24. However, with doing North Road, we did have to dip into it a little bit to finish that as well as other projects from last year. That's why up here, it shows us spending 2 million this year instead of the 2.25. Again, that was kind of a calculated decision that we made last year, or that I made last year, as well as there was one neighborhood that we did at the very end of last year that was kind of on the schedule. It was either gonna be the last one of last year, the first one of this year. So really, it kind of came, like, you could, in theory, put that for this year and it would, you know, wouldn't be false. But that's, that's why the, this is the 2 million. So if you continue out, this number right here is what you guys will be deliberating this budget cycle. And then there's one more that was back to the original goal that we had talked about for 2.5 for five years. I feel that these are actually a little conservative when I've been kind of running different numbers of what we have. I think that after next year, if it stays at the two and a half this year, I think we're gonna be in really good shape. I, I think we may be close to 70 at the end of next year, where if need be, if it had to start coming back down a year early, I think there's potential for that. I don't want to say it now, just in case. We still have a lot of heavy lift roads left, like, one of the ones we're gonna do this year is Blueville Road, that's gonna be very expensive, as well as we have, I want to start Bailey Hill, and that's one that unfortunately, just because of the cost of it, we're gonna have to break that one apart into sections. So as of right now with the money we have, we're probably looking at three years to do that, chunks of Bailey Hill. I would love to do it all at once, it just, then nowhere else in town gets anything. And then I know Margaret Henry is another one that needs attention, and that's gonna be a relatively pretty expensive one. And that's not touching Maple Street, which we know needs it, but there is some utility work planned, so we're kind of trying to wait and see if that can happen first. There's a little bit of a, kind of a playing chicken with the train with that situation. We're trying to wait as long as we can, but we might not be able to wait too much longer than that. Especially this, this winter, there was a lot of frost on that road, and it was, it was rough as well. It's kind of settled down now, but it definitely chewed it up, for sure. So, I know, because there's a part of this that has been in the mill rate and then there's been parts of it that are funded through capital. And I know that they, it'd be nice to kind of come off of pulling from the general fund or from, you know, mill rate if we can. I think we're getting close to, again, it all depends, you know, Mary O'Beckman. One thing I always yell and scream about is realistic expectations. You know, what's everybody's realistic expectation for our roads to be? It needs to be communicated to you guys and then from you guys, as well as the residents need to understand what our, our target is. I think having a realistic expectation of where we would like to quote-unquote plateau, or, you know, the range we'd like to live in, I think that is important. Because we could keep going, but we could also go backwards, too. So, I, I think if we're in that 70 to 75 range, I think it's a pretty, for our town, I think that's a pretty good target area. I think we can be there and I think a lot of people would be pretty happy with that. I think in our region, that would be very good. So, there definitely is a little bit to that. Because I know these are big numbers and they can't continue forever. As much as I'd like to be at 100 all the time, that's, I get that, that's my, my, you know, my wheelhouse or whatever. And I try to, I don't want to get too into the weeds on stuff, but at the same time, I know, roads don't really have a voice. There's a lot of people, I watch all the meetings and stuff, and I know there's a lot of people that talk about the schools and the library and the rec center, and they all deserve their attention, but nobody really, roads don't have a voice, not, as Mr. Grandowski would say, not here. They have a voice during the year when everybody's mad about the condition and stuff, but they don't have a voice here, which I know is hard for you guys to, you know, weigh out because you gotta take the voices you hear as well as all year long.
And so the budget that you have proposed before you recognize, maintains that, has funding at 2.5 million for the roads. And, you know, I've gone over, I have a couple of scenarios after I talked to the chairman about some possibilities around lessening the impact on mill rate for maintaining the same level of investment to really kind of continue to carry that long-term goal that the town had for that roadway improvement, knowing that you're kind of, you're kind of get, you're really, you're getting there. You're really getting to that place of achieving some of those goals on improving that road infrastructure. It's, I think, sometimes really difficult when you've established a goal like this several years ago. And, you know, we do hit these rough budget cycles and it's really hard to sometimes maintain those, those longer-term goals knowing that kind of you're almost at the light at the end of the tunnel, right? And having gone through this with Matt, you know, Matt really looking at it and saying, you know, I really think, you know, if we can keep the investment for another year at this level, then the next year, I think we're probably getting to a really good.
Yeah.
Sweet spot of being able to come more into dropping off of that investment level and being able to come to something that is less impactful on the mill rate or on utilization of capital and then therefore more sustainable to the community. You know, that's why, you know, I wanted to also have him give presentation. And then one of the other things that Matt did, did you have the additional slide?
Yes, the mill one, the mill one, okay.
So, one of the other things that Matt did, and he talked to me about this.
It's small, I know.
It's small, but we'll provide copies of this.
I can zoom in.
So, Matt actually looked at the mill rates for all of the municipalities in the nor, in the northeastern Connecticut.
Wyndham County.
Wyndham County.
I knew not to bring up Lexington, I learned that last year, or a couple of years ago.
So we just stayed in Wyndham County, right? So Wyndham County, so go ahead, Matt, I'll explain.
So, this is back from 2014, and obviously, this is a very overall view because every town has different, there's so many different nuances for every town. So this shows in our current year, the current fiscal year, they're listed from first to 15th in mill rate, starting at the lowest. The first number is mill rate. So we're second, which for the second highest populated town with the most amount of road miles, this is paved roads. Again, I'm tying it back to roads to make it about myself. But I think being second lowest is pretty good. In the 11 years, I went down at the bottom and I have numbers down here, and that's where Killenley ranked out of the 15 towns. So second, eighth, 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 seventh, third, fourth, fifth, sixth, ninth, and then back to second. So, I mean, I think that's, I think that's a pretty good, good rate considering. Again, all, it's, we're one of the bigger towns, we have some of the biggest infrastructure to take care of, as well as, we, we offer a lot of services. And not just public services like ambulance or fire, water, stuff like that. It also allows things for like us to have the highway crew that we have to be able to do projects like Owen Bell, the box culvert that we did. So like, that counts as a service. I know a lot of people don't think it's a service, they think of like trash pickup, which it is a service and other towns offer that, but it's overall service. And I kind of also made another, I had this from something else and I reused it years ago. This is just kind of, again, to help other people. I know you guys understand this, but I know sometimes listening to people talk or whatever, it kind of is a little thing that shows, you know, the higher your taxes go with lower development, it's trickier to get higher levels of public service. We go high, high, you can kind of have the highest levels of public service, but you go low, low, it's the lowest levels of public service. Again, I think it's just very important for everybody to understand realistic expectations. What, what do people want and what does it mean? And then I think when you look back at this, again, realistic expectations, you know, what's everybody aiming for? I know, you know, I listened to a lot of the comments and stuff and I understand everybody's concerns because I know mill rate is one thing that everybody talks about, but if you take your same property and you go to 13 other towns in Wyndham County, it's a little different of a story.
And so I think this picture also shows that that long-term investment and that steady.
Sorry, Matt, there's a few years that Wyndham didn't have some data on Connecticut's website. I'm not sure why, but that's why there's a break there. That's Wyndham didn't have information for the other years.
Well, that's important.
Again, I was very overall, I was more focused on the road presentation, so I didn't want to investigate too much.
But again, this is really looking at, you know, we've been able to accomplish a lot in roads in the last number of years and still maintaining one of the lowest mill rates in the entire region. And that's part of that, you know, collectively, your steady forethought in how to make that investment without really peaking your mill rate for that. And there are towns not that far away from us that are, that are bonding for roads. They're borrowing money to pave and reconstruct roads, which Killenley's never done that. I would never have recommended that because you're already touching it long before you pay off that bond, but lots of towns do do that. And the town, you know, Killenley has really definitely making, made a very conscious effort in how to address this in a, in a, I think, a more sustainable fashion.
And we do have a big, a big bucket to lift with that when you look at, you know, the next closest is 100 miles. It's, we have 23 more miles than the next closest one, never mind compared to everybody else. Yeah, and, and again, this, everybody, is, you can tell, too, one thing that changes this, everybody's at a different point in their revale years. Like, you can obviously tell, there's, there's a bunch of us that kind of took a drop all last year, but then there's other ones that are different years that, you know, we're probably not gonna be necessarily second this year, but I don't think we're gonna be 15th or 16th either, so.
Now, that, the miles of road, that is just town-owned road?
Town-owned paved, yep.
Okay.
Yep.
So back to Bailey Hill Road, is there cost savings for us to do that at one shot, I would think?
There would be, I mean, I don't, it's just basically inflation per year is the difference. Because the amount we're gonna do, it's not necessarily like a bulk discount, like at that point. We're still doing such a big chunk that doing more miles isn't gonna be like a lower unit cost, but pretty much just you're saving whatever it's gonna go up subsequent years would be the biggest cost savings, to be honest, on that one. Because we're gonna do about a third of it, so we're gonna do over a mile. So it's still a decent chunk, but it's not all of it.
I just think the mobilization that you wanted to do North Road.
Yeah.
You might upset a few people, but you're actually saving them some money as well in the back.
Well, and then they're not dealing with three years of construction, you know, like, oh, I hit this again, I hit this again. And, and it's interesting, like I said, there's one, one more little thing I think you guys will all find comical, I won't take too much longer, is roads don't have a voice. Last year, I watched the public, the public meeting, not the public hearing, it was a public meeting, and there was somebody who got up to speak. And one of the things that they suggested was that we cut a little bit of the pavement management to add more to offset the mill rate. Well, you know, everybody says their address. That particular day, we paved in front of that person's house. They literally drove on a brand-new road to come to the meeting to say, cut paving. Talk about, I want to throw your beer at the TV moment. But I give them credit, like, I mean, it, nobody, nobody called them out, nobody knew. And it's like, well, I guess you got your thing, so I, I get that, I get it. And I'm not saying that's why they did it, I just was like, what?
Kind of up to my point, you're not gonna please everybody, you might as well throw it in one shot.
Yeah, yeah, yeah. And there was somebody recently that spoke up about just what the town spends in general, and it was on the section of North Road that we talked about leaving. So it is definitely, like I said, roads don't have a voice or whatever, and I think we're really good. The only reason, really, I, I today messed around with dropping this number and kind of saying, I think in the last year, we can kind of bail off a little bit. The only reason why I'm holding out a little bit longer is that we're still doing a very high percentage of like reconstruction repaves compared to maintenance. So I just, I'd like to see that to start to come down, but naturally, with some of the roads that we have to do and the length of them, that, that's why that's there, just in case, again, Bailey Hill takes the three years, that, that's why that's there. But I do feel pretty confident that pretty soon you guys could start to taper off. Again, it's hard to say the exact what number that'll be down to. I, if I had to guess now, I think around a million and a half would be, you know, pretty realistic. That's right now, but.
So, so if you did, so by only doing that third of Bailey Hill, then that allows you to do like a bunch of smaller roads?
Not a whole bunch of smaller roads, this year is some bigger ones. So Coomer Hill is one that's been on our list for a few years. Blueville Road has been on our list for a few years, same as the section of Bailey Hill. Those are all, you, you can move them around, but like, you kind of still run into the same problem. Like, we could do all of Bailey Hill, but then those other ones don't get touched. And to be honest, this year is gonna be a little bit smaller of a year for work. And it, it has to do with this little bit of a drop, like that 500,000 that we had been using to this 2 million that we're aiming for is gonna be quite the difference. We're still gonna do our chip ceiling, and that's gonna be a decent amount of roads spread around. But, yeah, it's, it's definitely, it's, we could cut all of Bailey Hill off and add another one, or we could try to get all of Bailey Hill and then we're cutting other ones off. But, so it, that's kind of where we're at with that.
I, I know some of the smaller little, little roads here and there that kind of connect.
And there's some of those that, there have been some off of Maple Street, across from the cemetery, Walnut, Chestnut, all of those, those, those need work.
Those need to be rebuilt.
Yeah, and.
Because of the drainage.
Yes, and Alec is working on that and making plans, but though, that's an example of some smaller roads. There's a lot of neighborhood roads that I want to get to, but we can kind of, there's a lot of them. So obviously, having more money, you can do more of them at once. But I'm trying to kind of get some of these, instead of having to break Bailey Hill into like, say, sixths, we're trying to do it now. So if this starts to taper off and we do, you know, like a few years ago, we did Connecticut Mills. You start doing roads like that, Stone Street, which, you know, Morin Ave, roads like that, you can kind of finagle being able to go more areas in town with less money when you're doing shorter roads that are a quarter mile long compared to, you know, four miles long, like Bailey Hill is 4.2, I think it is, so.
Or Maple Street.
Yes, yeah, yeah.
But then, in the last few years, we've, you've had access to paving money by April 1st. A number of years ago, you didn't have access to anything until July 1st, when the budget was set. So you could not make any contracts with any of the pavers. Then they were already booked up and we're doing paving at the end of November, the end of October, and we're not getting, I don't care, the colder, the other day they paved and the ground was frozen in the morning. They were out paving.
And that's one of the reasons why, when we went into this, Matt took that step of using the funds that were being allocated for that year, instead of using them July 1, we scheduled, he then can plan out and schedule to start in the spring, right? That's important.
Because, yeah, he's, he can plan the guys in January, in February, you're gonna, or bid it.
Yeah, all of that, yeah.
Now they're already on board, where he doesn't, where in the other years, way, way back, you only get the money July 1st, then you can start the discussion. So now you know by, you've got good weather, even May, you can start then. You've already got decent weather.
And you.
Things go awry.
Exactly. If you get ahead of the weather and stuff, like some summers, we have rainy summers, you're already on the schedule, they're doing your work in May, June. Some of it will linger, but you're, you know, you're not gonna, waiting for everything pushed back. And again, having, having this, just, it gives you a little bit of flexibility as well. Like I said, last year, we, at the end of the year, there was a contractor, he had a job lined up that wasn't ready, and he said, hey, do you have anything that, that is ready? We didn't have to, like, I wasn't doing him a favor or anything, but we had, we had, it was the roads that he finished in October, were gonna be the start of this year, but we had that flexibility. And then you start to kind of, you can get them in and it gets another road, we had the money and that wasn't gonna mess anything up, so we were able to use that. And the same thing to get them going, you know, anybody that you guys, especially been around the construction industry with contractors and stuff, a lot of them that, like, a lot of these paving contractors, they don't work year-round. So when their first job comes up in the springtime, like, that's a lot of money out of their pocket to get up and going. When we have something ready and the money is there, they, they, we're willing to come to town first. We pay good and we pay right, you know, we don't wait, we don't drag it out, we're not waiting for money. So that helps us a lot, too, to get on the schedule. So we try to utilize that as well.
Now, how much of the work does, does the town crews do, or is it completely subcontracted?
So when it comes to fully, fully repaving some of these long roads, we subcontract it out. They're faster, we can, they can put it down quicker than we can buy it a lot of times. But there's all, all the prep work, all the drainage, we do all that in-house. We don't send any of that out. If we're gonna chip seal, we do all our shimming work first. And then some of the short roads, like Wright Road last year, we had to rebuild because it was, there was some washout problems that had happened, so we did that ourselves. So, not, not a lot of the big, big, long roads we do ourselves, but we do a lot of things that, same thing. We've worked on drainage stuff in March at times because we can, because we have the crew to do it. So while other towns are still kind of in winter mode, we've gotten ready and we're doing basins two months ahead of other towns to have them ready for the contractor to come in to be their first job of the year.
So like the smaller roads, I'm thinking, you know, like Schoonman or like, the, well, we have two high streets, don't we?
Yes, yeah, we do, but both of them, both of them we could do.
They're pretty short, they're pretty, pretty short. Those, those be something that a town, the town crews would probably do?
We did River Street behind Orrin, Charlotte Gladys a couple of years ago, that was ourselves, we did that. We did Pratt Road, the horseshoe part, we did that. We did Pratt Road, the horseshoe part, we did that ourselves. So, yeah, we would, and even North Road, there was a section of it that had to have quite a bit of work done ahead of time to get the grade and stuff to work. We did that the year before, and we had that section, the, the base on it. And then when the contractor came in, they matched everything to what we had done. So, yeah, probably, I would say, quarter to half mile is where we would seriously look at doing it ourselves versus, again, and that comes to, with the crew that we have, we have its flexibility. Robert and I can just decide, ah, this, we're going to do it this week. Like, it can be as quick as that. So that's handy to have that. And sometimes we put those roads on there for that, and we do them just for that reason of we have the ability to go do them when we want. And that helps a lot. And again, that, that's one of those, the, the public services that we have with the crew that we have, we have the ability to do that and save money as well as just get more done. Because sometimes there's things, if some jobs come in, say, lower, and, and we're doing pretty good, and we're going to have a little bit of money left at the end of the year. Sometimes that's where we'll be like, oh, what roads can we go do for this amount of money ourselves? And by then, the contractors are, they're, they're busy, they're behind, they're already pushing people off to next year at that point where we can just go do it ourselves. So that's, that's handy.
Yeah, you, the crews, the crews are very, I mean, I've seen their work, they do a really nice job.
It's, I, I think they, they do a very good job, and it, it helps a lot, and it shows, and, and we're not, we, we understand that we have to save the town money because that's what keeps our crew the size that it is, and we understand that.
There are quite a few of them work or live here as well, just like Randy.
Yep.
You know, it's their tax dollars.
Exactly. And then the ones that don't come in, and they're like, you should, we do so much compared to like the towns that, you know what I mean? That's, that's the opposite comment of like, wow, man, I wish I'd lived here kind of thing. But, or even when we go home from plowing snow, sometimes you get the stories, the next day, you'd be like, I don't even think they touched my, you know, like, there's a difference on that. So it's kind of interesting when you get the ones that don't work here.
Now, Matt, while you've got this slide up, you referred to, you, you referred to PCI.
Yep.
For the public who's here and the public that's at home, PCI, that's the Pavement Condition Index.
Correct, yep.
Can you get, go into a little bit, we know we had the original scanned on, I believe, 2018.
Yep.
It's showing on a graph. How is PCI determined each of the following years? Is it a formula that goes in? Is it an actual, are we doing multiple scans every few years?
No, that's a great question. Yes, it is the Pavement Condition Index. So this was the original scan, and then we had a follow-up scan in 20, I think it was 2021, I believe, was when we did it, is at the 57, that was the second scan. And we are getting close, I would like to do another one maybe after next construction cycle. But in between, there is a deterioration curve, and I don't have that slide, there's a life expectancy of a road and what it goes through. And at different, it'll, it's kind of like how a car depreciates. It'll depreciate a quick kind at first, then it sort of stabilizes for a few years, and then it'll keep, it'll drop again. And then as it gets to a certain point, it kind of goes off quicker. We kind of have those numbers, we use our originals, in between the years, we use our scan that we had originally every segment of road, and then we ran our, our own deterioration curve over that. When then we had the second scan done, we were a little bit different, just, it, it's what happens, that the scans are the best way to tell exactly what you have. We adjusted, and then we're doing that same thing again. We've, I've worked with the company that does the scan, as well as talking to some other towns, and tried to fine tune our deterioration curve to make it the most realistic of like where the drop offs happen and, and when they happen. So right now, this, this 64.3, that was one that has just run through our software that we have with the, the people who do the scanning, but that's based off of the deterioration that, the deterioration curve that we developed and worked with them on. So it, it's not just their number running, it's a number that I felt that we were actively seeing. And there's room in there every year to go in and kind of adjust. If it seems like a road fell off a little quicker or picked up a little quicker, we can adjust it. It's one of those, try not to do that too much, because it's real easy to get far from home with it, but that's, try to stay consistent. So every year, it's the same, the same thing.
Another thing I'd like to add is I know there was a gentleman at the, the public hearing for the budget that spoke about the mill rate being flat for a bunch of years, and now it's been going up. One of the things I look at, I, I look at correlation between that and the increase, the, the increase in the condition of the roads we have, and the increased money we started spending in the roads. And I, I remember my first year on the council, first budget process I went through, and we had asked for cuts from the town manager that was here at the time. And the first thing that was identified was the bitumness line.
Yeah.
It's roads, cut it from roads, nobody's going to complain. And, and of course, they don't complain then.
Yeah.
They complain down the road is, all right, now we're.
Yeah.
Exactly.
Yep.
But.
And then it takes so long to catch back up, that's the hard part, there's such a, a lag on that.
Yep. And that was, and that's one thing when Mary came on board, is she kind of talked to, talked to us that were on the council about the importance of making sure you don't cut the roads because it's an easy thing to cut. And seeing that the roads are starting to improve, yes, it took an investment from the town.
Yeah.
Definitely. And, but seeing that we're increasing the condition of the roads, it makes it easier for me to stand behind spending some money on the roads because we're seeing an increase in it. As much as I know, any increase in taxes affects everyone in town.
As do I, and I, I appreciate Mary and her time here for allowing me to come to you guys to speak, as well as all of you to be here to let me also put this presentation on, to, again, try to be the voice for the roads. Again, I know it's not the most glamorous thing, but it, it is, it's a big part of the town, for sure.
Now, Mary, would, when the condition, road conditions deteriorate, does that impact like a town's bond rating? Does that have, does it get figured into that?
Yeah. That doesn't really impact bond rating, but I will say that it does impact, you can definitely see impacts around economic development and growth, right? Fewer companies, when you have, you know, really rough roads, like, it's, you know, harder to attract businesses, you know, it's harder, you know, you don't attract as many people that want to buy homeownership, you know, so you're, you have, or invest in their homes, right? It's, it, it impacts it in that way. So that does eventually trickle to bond rating and things like that. One of the benefits that we saw in those, some of those years in which we had no mill rate increase, it was because we were seeing significant grand list growth too. And so that allowed, you know, that room in the grand list growth allowed for those inflationary costs to occur without impacting a mill rate, right? This year, unfortunately, you're facing a grand list that decreased because of our, our legislation, legislatures. So that is it. But, yeah, I mean, when you have, it's, you know, roads end up tying eventually to economic development and growth and, and homeownership, right? Vacancies in homes and stuff like that, because, you know, people pay attention to the road they're driving on when they're going to look at a house, and they pay attention to the neighborhood that they're in. And if the roads are all crumbling, you know, that's kind of their first gateway and entry, that's the, that's kind of the welcome mat, right? Here's your roads. And so, yeah, it just, it, it can color that, that lens.
But we talk about road deterioration and its lifespan. We just take Maple Street, portion of it, not that long ago. And how many water patches are already on there?
Yeah.
They put brand new water main in, but from what I understand, the piping is junk, so it's leaking.
I think it's, there's actually, it's just a lot to that. I know the.
I don't know.
Yeah, the water company's actually having an issue with the gas company and stuff that the gas company's doing with their mains. And I'm not sure how much of it is out and about in public. I know Connecticut Water is working on a study to kind of approach the, the ever source, because it's not just in Killenley they're having that problem. Furnace Street is like that too. And that's one thing too, when we, when we do roads sometimes in these areas where there's utilities, we, depending on how much we spend on those roads or, or what option we're going to pick, that does play a role into it. Because you know, within a couple of years, somebody's going to dig into it. So there.
So this was, but this is brand new, again, you have a brand new main, and from, I don't know, Dave knows more about it.
Yeah.
And I forget what he said to me, he was, he was busting my chops, and he says, we have a brand new road.
Yeah.
People were driving too fast on it, so we had to put the bumps back.
Well, yeah.
That's what it is. No, I'm only kidding.
Whatever it is, the product that's down below is failing, so they got to dig it up, replace it.
And that's something else we fight, and it's frustrating, but, yeah.
But there's, I don't know, what, four, four patches on Maple Street now, and he says probably every single, every single service is going to have to be dug up. So in addition to normal wear and tear.
Yeah.
And you get the.
And you can't.
Everybody's putting new, new stuff in to stop this, and it's.
But you can't, you can't, once we do a road, we do have a moratorium on, on excavation in it. However, if it's an emergency, it's an emergency, right? And if a water main breaks, you're going into, they're going into that road, you know, so there's, there's not really, you know, there's nothing that the town could do to prevent any of that.
Right, no, but it's just something that circumstances way beyond our control. And he'd like to say, you know, we get a normal lifespan out of it, but the utilities come.
Exactly. And that, that does change your projections too, because things like that can happen, for sure.
Now, Matt, you had, if I remember right, the average, without all any mitigating circumstances, or like what Ed's talking about, the average lifespan was like seven years, I think you would say?
Seven is where you would, roughly before you come back to do your next treatment, ideally, yeah. You could do, there's treatments you could do before that, but for our town and our style of town, that's where you start looking at your chip seals, is around seven years. If you just left one untouched, you can get, you know, you would hope to get 20 years out of it. We've seen roads that by year seven, they're not fully gone, but they, they need more so than other roads at seven. There's a lot of, and sometimes it's mixed, sometimes it's under, underlying conditions, there's a whole bunch of things. But, yeah, untouched, they say a road is 20 to 25 years. I could argue that some of them are probably closer to 15, but in that 15 to 20, if you didn't touch them at all. But around that year, six to seven is where we're starting to get back on, we want, we want to get back on. If we haven't done anything before, then that's, that's the target.
Okay.
And again, depends what type of road and where it is, because you're not going to chip seal a downtown road. You could, but everybody would, that wouldn't go over well at all to have the loose stone. But again, so there's different things we can do at different times for those style of roads, but, yeah.
And then you had a list that you had shared with us of like the best to worst, like the roads.
Yeah. I could, I don't have it with me, I can, I can, yeah, I can give it to Mary, and she can send it out to everybody of the updated one.
Thank you.
Absolutely.
Any further comments, questions?
I got one more thing that's not roads, if you guys have a few minutes, I'll be real quick. So in the, the public hearing, you know, last week, there was talk about the cemetery grant, I just wanted to touch on that. So we actually did look at it this winter, and it's pretty much a yearly grant. This year was one of the first years that was actually pub, published, like on the news, like, I think Winnie posted something about it. We looked at it, and in the past, we have a, we have a trust, and we've had volunteers that have gone out and done the work at times to different ones, and they've kind of made their schedule. Recently, everybody that was doing it kind of got away from it. We have a gentleman that works for us, Mary spoke about it on the Saturday meeting, he's become the steward of it. So it's kind of actually allowed us, again, to have like a two, a two-headed approach. We've mowed all the cemeteries this, this winter, Brian's gone to all of them, I think it was 58 of them he got to, that are, you know, that, not all of them are ours to take care of. So he got to all those, he went around, sometimes solo, sometimes with somebody, he's mowed them all, and then on his own time, he's gone to start to renovate some of them, or to preserve them, yeah. So he's taken his own time, and he's gone in, he started to stand some stones back up. He went to a class at Atlas Preservation that talks about monument preservation, so he's using the right materials and he's doing the right process. He spent a lot of time there, and if, I asked him today, I said, how, in your own time, because I know he's been tracking it, I said, in your own time, how much hours have you spent in the cemetery since, I think it was October or November? And he said, a little bit over 100. And I know this, because last week, he had the week off, and I was getting pictures of him on his time off, putting, he was sending me pictures of headstones, he was standing back up. So we are doing it, at the time, the grant didn't make sense for us. If you read all of the stipulations on it, there was certain things that we were eligible for, certain things that we weren't. And with our trust and with what we're able to do in-house, as well as what Brian's doing on his own, it made more sense for us to just track our work for a few years, and then, and then maybe potentially down the road, look at the grant. Because like, the, these are some of the pictures that he's sent me. So this is one of the befores, and then that was the same cemetery after. And then he sent me a bunch, and I made the mistake of asking him, hey, Brian, can you send me some pictures? This is one that he mowed, this is one that is up in the condos up there where he mowed that one, and then the pictures are kind of going backwards here. This was one, like, this is what happened. So when he gets there, you know, there's a lot of stones that are like this, and you can see there was one broken here, and you can see there was one he actually had put back together and, and stood back up that he said was in seven pieces. It doesn't, like he said, you know, it's not the best, but there's a way to clean them that kind of makes it all blend back together. And his target right now is he's trying to go through all the cemeteries that have the most Revolutionary War veterans in them, because he knows this year is the 250th year in case the town wants to try to do anything extra with those. And, and like I said, we, we do understand the history and the importance in this, and I didn't want to, anybody to think that we were just ignoring it. Yes, there was some time that maybe the cemeteries got a little neglected through our old system, but this is kind of one of those where we, we've taken it in-house, and we're, we're doing it ourselves, and I think it's working out very well. And then even real quick, I had him go around, and we're taking, and will this load, or did it timeout? I think it timed out. I had a map, what he did, oh, there it is. So I had him go around, because we're working on tracking everything too. So he took, these are pretty much all of them, I think there's two more he says he's got to get in town, and we're going to make a nicer map of this so we have it on our records, but if you like, click on some of them, he'll, it'll bring you to the name. And again, Brian has spent a lot of time in the Historical Society, doing a lot of research on them, and he went around and he took pictures of them all and geolocated them all. And again, on his own time, he's, he's mapping them, he's tracking who is there, he's bringing records with him to make sure that the names that are recorded are the ones there, to make sure the name is right on them. He's spending a lot of time, again, as a volunteer, doing that on his own, and then And then as the town, we're trying to do our part of making sure their mode and trees are taken care of, as well as tracking everything. So I just, uh, wanted to touch on that real quick, just to make sure everybody understood that we are, we are working on these.
Oh, I have to, I'll have to get his contact, because I did a lot of work so far up in High Street.
Yeah.
And I found the 32 Civil War veterans, a Revolutionary War and an 1812 veteran.
If he doesn't know they're there, I'm sure he'll be happy to hear that. And then just make sure you have a little bit of time, because he's going to talk to you about that.
All 97 veterans that are in High Street Cemetery are.
Um, and so I did, um, appoint him as a cemetery steward. So that way, when he's on those properties, off hours and off time, you know, people, if people were to be concerned about whether or not he has authorization to be doing work in there, he has that. So, um, I did officially appoint him as a, similar to how we do some of our open space stewards. I did the same thing for him with regards to cemetery stewardship. Um, and him and his wife had done a huge amount of work, um, on this. She worked, she does go down to the, um, Historical Society, she volunteers there. And so she does do, they do a lot of work on this, it's a huge passion for theirs. And, um, it's, you know, we've definitely, and it's great that, you know, because he does work at the Highway Department, he can coordinate very directly with resources to be able to get that done.
Maybe we do something different, maybe we look at that grant, maybe we do something like that. But we're utilizing what we have and taking that grant felt a little bit wasteful, because it wasn't going to help us as much as it could help all our towns.
Do we own that work? Is that part of the scope of the town to maintain this?
The town's responsible for it, whether or not which department covers it, the town is responsible for taking care of, I think it's ancient cemeteries is the official word for it, I believe. After a certain year, they, that's where they, they call it. I'd have to, I, I'm sure Brian's going to correct me.
Abandoned historic cemeteries, the town ends up, um, having to take the onus. Um, there's a lot of, a lot of the cemeteries that were transferred into the, um, into a trust, into the, uh, Almond Pain, right, the cemetery trust, I was trying to remember if I had, uh, if I was thinking of a library trust or the cemetery trust. Um, but, uh, so, uh, that's, you know, they were, a lot of them are maintained or, uh, managed through that cemetery trust. There are some that are still on, that are still privately maintained, they're still, uh, they're managed by a private association. Um, and we have a lot of those identified as well, so that way when people call, well, you know, whatever, this hasn't been mowed or this hasn't been done, we know that we can contact the association or the property owner.
And again, just sometimes doing it ourselves, it's one of those, sometimes maybe I'm a little too quick, but it, it's easier to do it ourselves sometimes than coordinate the volunteers on that. And that's not a shot at any volunteers or anything, but we know what's happening, we know when it's happening, to what extent it's happening, so that, and we have the ability to, so it just makes it cleaner for us, I, I think, as a town as a whole. So, anything else, so you guys, I'll let you guys get to it.
As far as the grant for that, um, because I was reading through, and it talks about municipal labor only if such labor is performed outside of the course of an employee's regular duties and/or outside the employee's regular work schedule. Um, how would his work that he's been doing there, um, would that fall into this? Would that be his extra hours he's putting there, we start logging?
He hasn't been paid for any of those extra hours, he's been doing it as a volunteer.
Yeah, I'm talking going forward, would that be something, if he's starting to log his hours to where, um, we'd be able to pay him for his time out of the grant if we applied?
I believe so, from how I read the grant, it wouldn't, he couldn't do it during work, so we'd still have to have that separation of what is expected for the town to do, which again, works out with our equipment and, you know, the wood chippers, the mowers. We have that, we have the guys that can use it, so it just makes sense to do that type of stuff. But then, the problem with that is anything that's left on that grant is your walls, your gates, your stones. And if you read on, I think there's some more red flags on that grant of, I won't call them red flags, but there's more criteria to meet. I think it talks about shippo, and it talks about that. And I've, I've talked to a woman, I, I can't remember her, her title at the state, to, I talked to the person who was in charge of the grant at this, and then I talked to a different person who I think oversees cemeteries more often. And doing stuff in-house, as long as there's a little bit of knowledge of the work, which he has through what he's done with his seminars and stuff, we don't have to necessarily do all of that. So unfortunately, to, to be able to do anything that's not mowing on there, you, you kind of, that's where it gets more complicated for us. So until we really know what we need, and we have money in the trust now, so we have money available to use kind of as we need it now. But, um, yeah, you probably, you could pay him, you just have to make sure that you're, you're meeting all the requirements in the grant when it comes time. But again, we're, we're tracking stuff, I made a fuel key for him when he takes out the mowers to specifically track the fuel for, for this, because then that, that's something we can go, yeah, yep. So, because again, this is the first year that I, I knew about the grant, and this is one of the first years we really started kind of in-house overseeing the cemeteries, not just, we didn't even oversee the volunteers before, that was separate from the Highway Department. So kind of having this first year on it, we want to track and make sure, if it does end up ever make sense for the town to apply to, it's a pretty, uh, straightforward grant that a lot of towns apply to. So I'm not too worried about it, I just want to make sure it makes sense for us. And then if we write that, write that check, we can cash it. I know it's not technically paying for it, but I want to make sure we can do to that extent what it requires, if we're going to do it, so.
So what is, what is our extent for the scope of work? Do we own mowing, we don't own dealing with any stones, any gates, where's the separation?
I, I, the exact language on it, it just has to be kind of maintained. So I think they look for the towns to pretty much make sure there's trees that are out of it and it's mowed, so it doesn't get overtaken by the forest. That's really the, the requirement for the town, and that's where, um, with the setup that we have, that's where our town stuff stops. And then it goes to the volunteer work and the trust paying for it. Because that, that's, and I've had him, you know, and Brian understands it, we had a very clear conversation of when you're working at work on town time, we're doing what is required of us by the state. Anything extra is your volunteer work. And, and he, that's, he's 100% on board with that, he, again, he's very passionate about this anyway, and he understands that. So that's the thing, we, we do the, the bare minimum that's required by the state to keep our cemeteries maintained, or that's what we are doing now with, within our department. And then we're, we're working, him and I are working on a schedule of how many times a year is he going to go to some of these? There's some, like Franklin Street, that's a little bit more out in the open, it's more of a lawn type, you probably have to go there a few times a year to keep that one maintained and looking well. Some of these other ones, you can probably go once a year and just make sure, just kind of clean it out quick. So him and I are kind of working, that's what the GIS map is for, so we can kind of plan out a maintenance routine to not make it too, too much, so.
So I would just like to say thank you to Mary, and thank you to you, Matt, because we talked about the cemeteries probably a year ago. And, um, I'm glad that this work has started, because as you know and you know, like, it's very near and dear to me. And we were looking to get a bunch of volunteers together to start cleaning some of these, so.
Yeah.
Put me in touch with Brian, please.
Absolutely, yes, yep.
But thank you, that's so important.
There's a lot of stuff that falls, when it falls through the cracks and ends up going to the Highway Department. And when we have volunteers at Cat Hollow, all of a sudden it gets a little bit too big for them, they can call on him. Conservation Commission, they're out on some of their properties, it's a little bit more than they can handle, he's available. Except, we start seeing those maps in their paving, then those guys can't leave then. So it's like, we got to plan it, well, sometimes it's hard to plan when you have volunteers, but at least, uh...
I, yeah, I think Matt's really been trying, we've been all collectively trying to really communicate expectations and be clear around timeline, right? So as we, you know, have an engaged group, like the Cat Hollow group with regards to volunteer, I think they have a better understanding that the Highway Department, uh, team is engaged in a lot of construction. And they can't just be, you know, oh, by the way, we want you to stop by today, right?
They're very good to work with, yes.
They definitely recognize that they need to schedule in advance. They have to be proactive around what do they expect, and, you know, what are their actual needs are, they coordinate in advance. So they're not like asking Matt to come down and look at something and fix it right then too, right? They definitely are starting to take, so a lot of our volunteer groups that are doing these things are starting to really, and even departments, even the voluntold's departments.
Then I start yelling about realistic expectations.
Like to go, hey, can we go do this, right? So, um...
And we like to a lot of times, but that's the thing, we want, we want to make sure that everybody understands when and how, and to what quality and everything like that, because that's how it can be a slippery slope of people getting the wrong misconception of the town, or not just our department, the town in general. Oh, they didn't do good on this, or they didn't do this, well, there's, again, what, what's everybody's expectation of it? And again, doing a lot of those things, yeah, sometimes Ed, when this stuff comes in, sometimes you're like, ah. But at the same time, we understand that's our role in the town as well. And having the size crew that we have with the ability that we have, we, we kind of, we try to lean into it when we can. Because that, again, that's one of those public services that we're able to provide that some other towns aren't.
But it's nice to have a little bit of notice, I don't want anything to be an emergency, and it's, you're already on an emergency with the two higher priorities, but... Anyway, I don't want anybody getting hurt, so to speak, but, you know, they have to wait, but it's, even Chase Reservoir, the guy that's doing the, the hard timber hobby, we got to build an access, uh, landing for that.
Yeah, we already did that, yeah.
A few things, again, maybe now, right, right now it's okay, but when you get into heavy paving season, that gets to be a little difficult.
And that's the thing, right, like, he would probably be able to do that himself, but we're going to, that's an extra or a change order. You know, that's something that, yeah, it, there isn't, it's not just sometimes us finishing stuff for people, sometimes it is. But other times, it's one of those, like, it, if we don't do it, he'll do what he's got to do, but that's going to change the price of the contract. So that's where sometimes it, it is a little bit of an eye roll at times, but I understand the greater good, and that, that's where we try to come in and make the difference on those things.
Any other questions, comments? Mr. Gambatista, do you have anything?
Oh, no, but, uh, Matt, thank you very much. I, I think when, uh, the slide that you showed with the percentage of, you know, kind of where we were, uh, you know, the drop down, and then kind of us escalating on the roads, I think that's good for the taxpayer to see, you know, where that money's going and, you know, what those improvements do, especially when you show it like that in a number, I just think it's very impactful. And, uh, thank you for the clarification on the cemeteries, it was wonderful.
Thank you, Tony.
Thank you, Matt.
All right, thank you guys, I'll let you get to your, uh, next stuff, thank you.
Next, we're going to move on in the agenda. Item 5A, budget deliberations, consideration, action on a resolution, resolution setting the town of Killingley operating budget for fiscal year 2025 to 2026. Uh, can I get a motion to adopt this resolution?
So moved.
Motion made by Ms. Wakefield, second by Ms. Barclay, and now we will go into discussion.
Okay, so, um, I don't know if you want me to start with the scenario one, so I did have a conversation with council chairman around some things that you guys have, just as far as consideration around what you heard with the hearing.
One thing I would, I would like to bring up, um, seeing how Steve is here from KBA Ambulance, um, and that is one thing that had been discussed as a possible scenario, and the fact that we received more information this afternoon, some clarifications on, um, the ask from KB Ambulance. I will entertain a motion to suspend the rules to allow Steve to come and speak. Motion made by Mr. Grandelsi, second by Ms. Barclay, discussion. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed?
Aye.
Abstentions, motion carries. Steve, if you could, please.
Good evening, Steve Arg, uh, Chief of KB Ambulance. I really, I didn't put the presentation together for tonight, I wasn't expecting to speak. I, I missed the public, uh, hearing or the public, um, meeting last week. So I know there were some questions about my budget proposal, uh, so I came in tonight. And I had sent some clarifications today, um, after looking over it and having some stuff pointed out. I don't know if you want me to go over that, I, it's...
If you could just start with those clarifications, especially so the people who are, um, any audience are at home listening and know what those clarifications were, thank you.
Sure, so it was brought to my attention that, um, one of my line items, line, uh, I'm going to have to put on some glasses.
Tony, I don't, hang on a second, Tony, I don't know, remember if I emailed this to you, so I'm going to forward it to you again right now, just in case I forgot, because I sent you a bunch of the stuff from today.
Thank you. Um, so line item 6002 total for office supply expense. Um, in, in the column for 2425, um, it was only the office supply expense. However, somehow in the column for 2526, um, it also displayed the mortgage expense allotted to Killingley and the accounting expense, expense. Um, so it made a huge jump in that office supply line, or made it look like it was a huge jump. Um, but in reality, it was just totaling, uh, some additional numbers into that line item. So the correction that I sent today, um, separates those out, um, so it, it shows that it's only a, uh, uh, what is that, a $3,000, uh, increase, uh, for the, for the, uh, o- office supplies. Uh, yeah, overall, um, you know, we were asking for, uh, $215,000 for this year. Um, and that's basically, as we went through, when I did the budget again this year, we started at a, a zero budget and built it up, um, and then matched it to what we're, we were doing now, um, to see how we, we compared. And it really, um, we were right on par, we did, uh, decrease a few things. And the out, the, the overall, um, presentation is a little bit different, because now I matched it more to what I do every year. Whereas the last few years, it was kind of broken apart, um, and the numbers were put into a different spreadsheet, um, taken out of what I usually work with. So this is built on what I work with every year, um, and I built this, uh, yes, I had the, my board behind me and board members with me, um, the last few years, um, it was also built by other people. These, this budget here is, is built by me. Um, so, uh, uh, again, it, it's only a, a $10,000 increase from last year, and that really is to help improve our payroll, um, uh, possibly do some stipends for, for like night shift and weekend shift. Um, as, uh, as, uh, those are always the hardest shifts to fill. Um, I know last year, one of the big questions was on, on, uh, our overtime. Um, right now, we're at 11% overtime, and a lot of that overtime really is just getting out late. You know, if the call goes out at 5:30, like, every call is about a two-hour call, sometimes a little bit longer, depending where it's going. You know, a call goes out at 5:30, you're supposed to be out at 6, you're two hours overtime, uh, very quickly. And it adds up, because it's two people on the ambulance, sometimes three, because the paramedic is with them. Not that the paramedic goes on your overtime, but, um, you know, it adds up quickly. And then there is overtime for filling, backfilling shifts when, when we're short. Um, we were full staff, uh, until about three weeks ago, when we have several people move out of state, uh, or let us know that they're moving out of state. Um, so, uh, we're, 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 uh, hiring again, so if you know any EMTs, uh, please let me know. Uh, uh, other than that, um, you know, I think we're, I was pretty close last year to where I wanted to be. Um, we did trim some numbers, because the, the 10,000 doesn't do the, the, the 2% or the 4% increase that we want for the, for the employees. Um, but, uh, with looking to see where the insurances fell and where we could save, um, we did drop our overtime from, uh, it was somewhere around 15, 16% um, for, for the year before. You know, we're down to about 11%. We, we have a lot of new members, so thankfully, that puts us on the lower side of the payroll, um, rather than the higher average if, if, uh, if they're here long-term. Um, so a lot of younger EMTs, um, but, uh, that's what I have, any questions?
So the, the numbers that you have presented from 2024, from last year, don't match up. I remember specifically like the ca, um, for cable, you had 500 a month.
Right.
And I know for your mortgage expenses, you had 2,200 a month, so those numbers don't match up.
So a, a couple of things with, um, the utilities, the cable, I, it was one in particular that had some, um, because the cable is also an internet-type bill. Um, it also had enrolled some of our computer or tablets for the ambulance into it, and that was pulled out and we changed it. I changed it on this presentation to match where, and like, try to clean it up and match more of where it's supposed to go. So I, I do know that this 2425 isn't the exact presentation that I presented to you last year. And that's what I was saying, it's a different, um, view of the numbers from last year. Overall, the numbers should total the same.
The mortgage expense was quite a bit higher?
Than what I put on the 2425?
It was 2,200 a month that you had? It, for last year, it, and it's, it's different on this paper, and the figures don't match.
Okay, um, and I don't...
Steve, could that have been your estimate to your actual?
It could have been.
Yeah.
Um...
You should know what your mortgage is going to be.
So the...
It's the same every month.
Yeah, so last, the previous year, we had three, we used three different, I'll call them, groups of, of, uh, payers into that mortgage. We added the, the fourth group, um, when we continued to, to work with Day Kimball. So we split that mortgage, so it definitely came down, um, from previous years, because we now have another, another group to help pay that mortgage. So we, we incorporated that into the, the budgets. And maybe I changed it from last year, not realizing that I had done that, but that's what you're saying, the number on here for 2425 is lower. It is, it, the mortgage payment is $2,100 a month, or 27, 21 or 27, I don't, I don't remember, every month. But Killingley doesn't pay that entire thing anymore, because we have the paramedic program, now we have a Day Kimball program. Pofford doesn't pay into that, because I, they don't, they have their own building, and they pay for their own building. Um, so it was two, now it's three, three different programs pay for the mortgage on our building now. Um, so that changes, and that's why, like, all of this is complicated, because not only is it different programs, but all of those ambulances can do everything, and every day, they do everything. The transfer ambulance did 174 emergency calls in town of Killingley in the year of 2024. There are some towns that don't have 174 calls in their town, you know? So our transfer ambulance, that is not supposed to be in Killingley, is doing 174 calls in Killingley. Um, we had, uh, s- close to 1,000, uh, second or third crew calls. Now during the day, we have a second ambulance in town, and that's what part of this budget pays for, is that second ambulance. We don't pay for the whole thing, because the other half of that has a paramedic on it. But that means that emergency call in town of Killingley gets a, an ambulance that you're only paying half for, because you're still paying the other half, because it's coming through NICOG, but it's coming from the NICOG budget on my end. And I have to sit and figure out how those numbers get cut up and get split up. And I can do, yes, the personnel I can do with the gas and the, and the mileage and the ambulance cost. The equipment I can do, because we separate BLS equipment from ALS equipment. Um, but the revenue is even tougher, because the revenue on every call is different. And on every call, I, you know, I, I don't, I don't get a breakdown of what is BLS versus ALS, it's an overall payment for the entire call. So I don't, I have to figure out how to break that apart for, you know, this amount of that revenue goes to the ALS program, this amount goes to the BLS program. Nationwide, they do it by call. So each call, our revenue averages out to be, right now, it's about $450 per call. That's great, and I do that, and we do that a lot, because that's what they do across the, the country. But for us, when I have two different programs on that same call, I need to figure out how to break that apart and make it work. Um, so when there were 2,400 transports in the town of Killingley, I can say, all right, 450, 450 per call gives us the 1, uh, 1,084,000 or so. But technically, 1,400 of those were... But technically, fourteen hundred of those were ALS, so some of that revenue has to go back to the paramedics somehow, you know? Um, and, and it's a, it's a tough thing. We're one of the few towns that operate the way we do, um, especially, um, with the different programs. Across the country, across the state, I mean, they're, the paramedics are either based out of a hospital and intercept with paramedic, or the ambulance companies. Two completely separate programs. Or they are, um, town-based ambulances. So the town pays, you know, in Hartford, the town pays AMR to be a transport ambulance. Um, and actually, I believe in Hartford, that was a for example, because they have paramedics on their fire trucks. So they have, they do it opposite. They pay AMR to be the BLS provider, and the town, um, is the paramedic provider. Um, but, uh, closer to us, in, in like Massachusetts and Rhode Island, the, the ambulances are ALS, everything's ALS. Um, so you don't have that separation like we do here. We don't have two programs paying for the same call for the same company. Um, we're, we're, uh, we're, we are a very unique program. And then we also started doing the transfers, which nobody's ever done, nobody's gone from nine-one-one to, to doing transfers and, and helping the community that way, um, and building a, the company like we have. Uh, and honestly, and I've said this before, you know, it wasn't what I came here to do, but it's the right thing to do. So that's why we did it, you know? Um, they come, uh, uh, across, across the state, the, the, the hospitals have trouble getting people out of their facilities. Um, I had a hospital from Pa- Farmington asking me, it's UConn Farmington, asking me if I would come out there and take their patients out of their hospital. Because they couldn't get, they had somebody there over twenty-four hours that they couldn't get out because they couldn't find an ambulance to take them home. Uh, to, back to a nursing home, but, um, so across the state, this is what happens. And Day Kimball is, calls us every day and, and begs us to add, uh, not to add, but to pick up their patients. I only have one ambulance that I, I can, yes, we do put two together sometimes, but we only dedicate one ambulance a day to that transfer program. And I can't, when you have eight patients and two of them are supposed to go to Hartford, I can't do it all, you know? I'm off on a tangent, but, um, we do a lot. We, we did over seven thousand responses last year between all of the programs. Um, uh, we transported, uh, I know we transported twenty-four hundred calls out of Killenley. Uh, I believe the NICOG program transported twenty-four hundred calls. Um, Pomford transports about four hundred calls. Um, the transfer program did, uh, just over twelve hundred calls last year. And we're probably gonna increase that by five hundred calls this year for the transfer program.
So how are you differentiating the salaries between the transfer program and the regular, um, EMS, BLS?
The salaries are all based on hours. So we cover twenty-one hundred, twenty-one thousand nine hundred hours of scheduled time for the, for, for Killenley. For Killenley, yep. Um, and then our time system separates that, so when you punch in, you punch in for the shift that you're working. Um, so we ended up at, uh, in, in the year twenty-four, we ended up with just over twenty-five thousand. I, uh, wrote those numbers down for myself today. Um, we ended up with twenty, almost twenty-six thousand hours. Um, so that includes, uh, standbys. Um, and again, when you think of a standby, if you do a four-hour standby, it's eight hours because it's two people. Um, and so they, they add up quickly. So, you know, standbys, um, holdovers, um, second crew calls, um, are also put onto there, uh, and, uh, whatnot. So we, we clocked, um, twenty-five thousand seven hundred, almost eight, uh, twenty-five thousand eight hundred hours to the town of Killenley last year. That doesn't, we, we put on over seventy thousand hours a year, um, between all the programs.
Where, where do baseball games, football games come into that? Is that included in that total?
Um, those hours are included in there, and we do, um, get some revenue back from those, uh, standbys, um, because we, we are charging for standbys as well.
So when you say transferred, does that mean transferred like to Day Kimball, like what you're doing for them?
Right, so the transfer is coming out of Day Kimball. Anything that we take out of Day Kimball is considered a, a transfer.
So how many, how many calls in Killenley that were just ambulance calls that has nothing to do with like transfer to going to Day Kimball?
O- over three thousand, almost thirty-three hundred calls in the town of Killenley. We did twenty-four hundred transports in, from the town of Killenley. Those are the nine-one-one calls in the town of Killenley.
When you say transport, that's different than the, the transfer, right?
Correct, well, cur- yes, but yes, for the town of Ki- and then for the town of Killenley, the transports were twenty-four hundred. For the, for the town of Pomford, we did four hundred transports. For the transfer program, we did over twelve hundred transports, which are transfers. So they're not interchangeable, transfer and transport are technically not interchangeable.
So transport, Day Kimball picks up the bill for that?
Transfer.
Transfer.
Transfer, the, the Day Kimball program does, yes. We are, we, we do get revenue back from those now. Uh, at the very beginning of that program, Day Kimball was paying the entire bill for that. But, uh, we get revenue, um, we can collect revenue for that.
Now, the difference in those, in your calls and then your transports are sometimes they refuse. And then on those cases where it's a cardiac arrest that is unsuccessful in the resuscitation?
So, um, we responded to about thirty-three hundred calls. Um, we transported about twenty-four hundred in the town of Killenley. Those can be anything from refusals to, uh, non-injury car accidents, to cardiac arrests, um, uh, that are either, uh, DOA, or we, um, provide resuscitation attempts. Um, if we do not transport, in general, the, the insurance companies do not pay. Um, we can charge an ALS assessment. And, uh, now, some companies will recognize, I believe they call it a medical assist. Uh, so like a lift assist, providing that we do an evaluation and, and get a set of idols, uh, and they refuse. But we provided care to them, meaning we lifted them. Um, we can collect some funds. It's definitely not the four hundred and fifty, well, technically that's, you know, we, the state sets what we can charge. Um, and I don't have the exact numbers in my head. For a BLS ambulance call, um, it is over a thousand that we can charge. Um, and it's pretty sad that we only get four hundred and fifty back, uh, from, from, uh, especially like the Medicare and Medicaid programs. Um, the cardiac arrests that we work, uh, that we, you know, attempt resuscitation on site. Um, the current state protocol, we, uh, attempt resuscitation for twenty minutes. Um, if there's no changes, then we, uh, do a presumption and, uh, they stay on scene. Which means we don't, we use all of our equipment, and I mean all of it. And we don't get any, uh, revenue back from that because we left them on site. And the insurance companies will not pay for, for no transport. Um, so it, you know, I, I don't, I, I started looking up the numbers today. I know that we have, um, this year, we've, we've, uh, we had over thirty-five cardiac arrests in the first three months. Um, it, it was a pretty busy time, and most of them were resuscitation attempts. Um, some of them we did transport, I don't have all those numbers, uh, but, uh, we definitely do that often. Um, you know, the survival rate of a cardiac arrest is probably less than ten percent. So ten percent of our, our cardiac arrests are transports. Um, that's a lot of calls that we work on site and do not receive any revenue for.
How many calls do you do, like, company-wide transports?
Um, right now, we're at about four thousand transports.
How many towns you serve?
Uh, for the paramedic level, we serve nine towns, or, or eight and a half, because it's half a playing field. Um, obviously Killenley, uh, and then the tri-town program is Eastford, Hampton and Pomford. And then the Day Kimball program, I mean, that goes all over. So it, it all depends on, you know, a, a majority of those calls are back to the local nursing homes. Um, Davis Place, Westview, Matulitis, Pierce. Um, tho- those are the ones that we're, we're doing most often. Um, but then, you know, the higher level of care, those cardiac patients, the stroke patients that Day Kimball can't care for, they have to get somewhere that can, they call us, we, we try to get them where they need to be.
What are the percentages for the towns that they contribute? Like, is, there's some kind of breakdown, Killenley gives X amount of percent, Plainfield gives whatever half percent?
For the NICOG program, um, they do it by call volume. So there's a set call, a set price per call that, um, the NICOG program runs off of. Uh, Day Kimball pays part of that, and then the towns, uh, do the rest. And again, it's only paid on transports, so, um.
So we get a bill that breaks down all the calls and a price per, per call? So we get for that?
So how does, how does this all maybe up between towns? Like you're.
This has nothing to do with, this has nothing to do with NICOG. This is only, this is only the Killenley budget portion.
But do you have budgets for other towns, like percent?
Yeah.
What, what do the other percentages be? What is, like, what do, what do we pay out of your, your budget per capita, or how does, how does that derive?
Um, I mean roughly, it's a quarter, um, and that's just by happenstance, really. Um, I, my entire budget is about four and a half million. Um, and this is, you know, the, the one point two something million. I, I've got a lot of the numbers in my head, I apologize. Um, I don't know how you all do it, but, alright, so this is, uh, this is the one point three. Um, and it, it is definitely a little bit lar- it, it's larger than Pomford, right? Than the Pomford, uh, Hampton, Eastford ambulance. Because, because of the call volume, we provide more service here. Um, and, uh, the paramedic program is probably about the same. Um, and that's strictly because of the cost that it costs to, to provide the supplies needed for that, for that program. Um, and we provide, uh, two paramedics a lot of the time on that. Um, and, uh, Day Kimball, uh, the, the Day Kimball transports actually pay better than the nine-on-one transports. Um, uh, but it's about the same. I didn't bring the, the whole breakdown of my entire budget tonight, but, um.
Did they ever give you what they promised? I just, that's a sidebar, I'm just curious.
I, I will say that that first year that we helped Day Kimball, um, they were very good to us. And they, and they have continued to be good to us. Um, they definitely wanna make things work. Um, I think they, um, how do I be politically, I think they have enough on their plate to, to worry about. Um, and because the transports have paid better, we've done okay. Um, but that's also a reason why I don't have two ambulances, and they want two ambulances during the day. And there's a reason why I don't have two ambulances, um, is because I can't guarantee that I'm gonna be able to support that ambulance, that second ambulance. When there's calls to be done, and we can do it, we do do it because we know that we're doing calls, and the calls will support putting them on. But to staff an ambulance not knowing, um, whether we're gonna have calls or not, and that's, that, you know, it's a lot, it's a lot of money. You know, in, in the town of Killenley, every day, there, there's at least two ambulances on the road, two or three times a day, right? So we know we're gonna have the call volume, that's why we have two ambulances during the day. Um, we're lucky enough to be able to break it down and put a paramedic on that ambulance, half of the call volume, maybe not half. But a lot of that call volume is paramedic level anyway, so it, it gets utilized correctly. Um, and, uh, we're able to, to, to share that resource, and it works great. Um, you know, the overnights have, have become tougher, uh, and we would love to staff the overnights and, and, you know, maybe we'll get there someday. Right now, I think we're, we're kinda status quo, and, um, as far as the paramedic program, I don't have the, the numbers exactly for the mutual aid, um, for ambulance service, because it's harder to know who, when people came in, if they didn't tone us out and whatnot. Um, the NICOG program, we've been able to set it up where we can, we see those numbers a lot more. Um, so as far as where, we understand, we cover about ninety-six percent of our call volume on the, on the paramedic program. So it's hard to say for those, you know, three percent, four percent, um, that I need to put another medic on overnight. But though, that's when we have our toughest time, right? So during the day, there's, there's, uh, management in the building, you know, I'm, I'm there, I can always run on the road and, and, uh, I generally end up being last out and on a BLS ambulance, not putting in a paramedic, but that's alright. We'll, we'll, we'll do it, I'll do whatever it takes to get the calls done and, um, and actually, that's one of the reasons why I didn't make the meeting last week, because I ended up on the road, I had intended on going to that, and I just, we had way too many calls.
How does NICOG play a role in this whole scenario?
In this year, it, it really doesn't, but in our programming, um, you know, NICOG, uh, had put out the RFP. We took it over in twenty-fifteen, um, when we, when we bid on it then. Um, we expanded the program quite a bit since then. Um, and the contract there is, is now kind of a renewable contract every year, um, that we, uh, negotiate the costs on. Um, I guess similar to this, and, uh, it, but like I said before, that, that's a separate budget that I put together from this. Um, and it, it is tough, I, you know? So part of the ambulance that's responding to the call in Killenley, part of that ambulance is paid for by NICOG. Part of it's paid for by, by, uh, uh, NICOG and Killenley. But then that, on the next call, you get just a BLS ambulance with a paramedic in a flycar. So now that call isn't paid for, it, it's paid, you, you're paying, that's your ambulance, that's your BLS ambulance coming in. But because the ALS ambulance was already utilized, now there's a flycar coming in too, that's strictly a, a NICOG. And now it combines, and how do, how do you combine that when, now I've got more resources on scene? And it, it changes every, every call, every day, every minute. And then a third call goes out and, you know, we throw people on an ambulance to make the ambulance crew work. And make sure that we have the correct level of service, you know? If we need a paramedic, the paramedic's on it, i- in the town of Killenley. Or the paramedics in a flycar going to Thompson, you know, it, it, every day. It, it's different, it's, it's, I, I wish it was as simple as I can spend X amount of dollars to buy this, uh, you know, whatever, this building. And I can pay five dollars and sell this for ten dollars and make this much money. It's not like that, you know? Not in this business. I, every call is a different setup. It's a different day, it's a different.
I'm just curious with the NICOG, how does NICOG play in that?
So it's the regional paramedic, so the, um, yeah, so that's the paramedic program. Um, um, and then the ambulance, the BLS is, is separate. So that's what the request directly from KB Ambulance is, is for BLS. Um, the paramedic intercept is, we, we pay on a per-call basis based on that negotiated regional contract.
And one of the discussions I had with, uh, Chief Barker today was the EMR line. Um, EMR is used to just, to be exclusively used to drive the ambulances because they're a step below an EMT. Um, but the state regs have changed, and you can't have an EMR driving. If there's a paramedic on it, they need an EMT to ru- to be in the van, in the bus with them, so. Um, so that's why they've toned back on the EMRs, because they really can't utilize them as much.
It makes it tough to, to go on, to, uh, get on calls and, and make everything work when there's an EMR in the mix. It makes it tough to, to go on, to get on calls and, and make everything work when there's an EMR in the mix because of how you have to have the ambulance staffed. You have to have an EMT on that ambulance with a paramedic.
Say I'm having difficulty, I call nine one one.
Yes, sir.
What am I supposed to, I mean, what you're, there's a, there's so many things going on. How in my situation am I going to explain to the dispatch so that you understand what I need?
So the, the dispatch centers have an EMD program to ask questions. And they code it to a certain level. So they will code it whether, and it depends on how in-depth the dispatch center you, we utilize is. QV is fairly in-depth, but they code it as to whether you just need a first responder to come help you get up off the floor because you fell and you're not injured. You just needed to get back in your wheelchair or in your chair or something. To an ambulance to provide care for, for a basic level emergency. To a paramedic for difficulty breathing or chest pain or, or whatever the level of service. But they, that EMD program asks those questions and they dispatch it as appropriate. So that's a, that's a setup between the towns and the dispatchers, the dispatch center.
But you still, you still have to interpret the call.
Yes. And that's part of the one thousand calls that we get dispatched to that may not need an ambulance or may not need a paramedic. I think the dispatch calls for the paramedic versus the paramedic transports are a little bit higher. So there's more calls that the paramedics are canceled on that they're not needed because of the, the difficulty in, in communicating that, what the level of need is. So we'll go out and determine that the ambulance, the basic ambulance can handle the transport and the paramedic doesn't need to be there. It's a lot, it's, it, there's a lot of moving parts, absolutely.
If you have a problem, call nine one one. Well, it's not as simple as that, you know, everybody has to have a little. You're impaired and you're doing it, so even someone else, how do you? I'm impaired, someone else is calling for me, they don't really know.
Right, right.
And if you're supposed to know all this, oh my god.
I, I definitely, it's, it's not that I don't trust the dispatch, but I know that there's difficulties in between. So what we're dispatched for, we never expect to walk into that because we never know what we're walking into. You know, you get called for, for difficulty breathing and it, and it's an arm injury. I don't know. I, I, you know, but it, it is. Like I, I went out for difficulty breathing the other day and it was back pain. So, I mean, there's not a large stretch between there, but it's not the same.
Right.
You know.
How many EMRs do you have?
I believe we're down to two.
What's, what's full staff though?
So, so I didn't, I didn't bring that, those numbers with me. So I listed in my letter thirty-two full-time employees. That's between everything. I believe my BLS level, so EMT, EMR full-time level is twenty-four, I believe, is my wish list. For Killingley, it's eight, well, eight and a half fill-in ambulance for twenty-four seven. We provide two and a half, uh, two, one and a half ambulances to the town of Killingley. So it's a, you know, what's that? Four, twelve, twelve for the town of Killingley then, twelve or thirteen full-timers for the town of Killingley. Again, we, we have to cover, somehow we have to cover twenty-one thousand nine hundred hours of scheduled hours. You know, that, that's what our minimum staffing is for the town of Killingley. Those are the BLS hours that we schedule in the town.
Hi Chief.
Hello.
So I just have a technical question. So when you guys started up the transfer program, we just had some concerns and questions around KBA's nonprofit.
Correct.
And then you started up the revenue stream. And I know last year you were hiring someone to do billing or something like that. You, you had somebody that was going to be doing the, picking up some of the slack for you to help separate those two. Has that happened?
So the, I'm not exactly sure what you're, you're bringing up.
I thought you were hiring someone to work.
We had, we have hired an administrative assistant.
Yes.
To work in my office.
Yep.
To help me keep things moving through the office.
Okay.
Because it is a lot, a lot of chaos. Uh, yes, that's a great word.
She's quite capable and he, and he said he wished he would have did it.
Yes. I, I, I put off for a long time hiring, you know, my board had, had told me that they thought I should hire an assistant. Because there's a lot going on. And I, I wanted to rather use that money towards my employees payroll, so I refused to do it. I, I do wish I had done it earlier.
But it's very useful, right?
It is. She, she does a lot for me. She keeps a, a lot of, most of it is the, making sure everything's moving. So when the mail comes in, everything, everything goes where she, she tells me about the different bills and whatnot and, and gets those put into the, to the books and make sure I'm on top of those. Keeps me up to date on emails, helps me with the hiring process. About four years ago, we switched to, uh, outs-, we outsourced our payroll to a payroll company. So I was no longer doing the payroll. We still have to do the hours and verify hours and whatnot. It goes to the payroll company. She helps me verify the hours, make sure everything's all set for the payroll company and keeps all the information up to date in those, along with the health insurance paperwork and everything, making sure that all my employees get the appropriate paperwork when we hire them and whatnot. She does, she does have a, a business background and a baking background, so it, it helps quite a bit.
So between those two, so we have the nonprofit side of KB, the service side. And then we have the revenue generation for the transfer. So are you doing the separate books now? Like, and are your?
We, we are, so when, when we.
How do you get away with that?
So everything we do generates revenue. It just doesn't generate enough revenue. Including the trans-, the transfer agency. Although right now it has sustained with the hours that we've covered for the transfers. And again, that's because those calls are paid better primarily because we don't have any that are not paid. Those are always paid. Whereas nine one one calls have some self-pay stuff that ends up getting written off. A lot of the copayments are never paid on the nine one one calls. However, on the transport, the transfer transports, they are more regularly paid. Whether it's by insurance or whatnot, for whatever reason, the revenue recovery from those transfer transports is higher. So we've always collected a revenue. Otherwise, we would be here asking you for millions.
What is your five oh one status? Aren't you guys?
We are still a five oh one C three.
So you're still doing nine ninety?
Yep, we still do a nine ninety. It is public nine ninety.
Are those caught up now? Because they were a few years behind last year.
As far as I know, you know, we're working on, are my, the accountant is doing the twenty-four nine ninety. So I, I, I thought they were always caught up. Every year we do them. Well, I don't do them. The accountant does them.
Well, I say caught up because on Guidelight for nonprofits, last year it was a few years behind. It takes, before they hit up.
Yeah, sometimes it takes a while for it to get from the IRS to post it onto those public sites, so.
But yeah, I know, I just know that was a huge question. Because the transfer was more of a money generating, it was almost like a new business plan. And we were trying to determine, like, how are you offsetting the costs of the startup?
So when we spoke, when we spoke to our attorney about whether or not we would be able to say, stay a nonprofit. As long as our board of directors is still a volunteer board of directors, which it is. And our, our goal, our business model, or I can't remember. The primary mission is for, to service the community with emergency or medical services. Then we would still be able to, to continue with the five oh one C three. So we have continued with the five oh one C three with that. Everything that we're doing for De Kimball is because the patients need to move.
Right, right.
You know, so, and, and it's all about that patient care. If, if, if it wasn't, we wouldn't be doing it. And, and you know, there's others, services that can be provided to De Kimball to help with that. And we've considered looking at that like wheelchair service, but we're not a wheelchair company. We're an, we're an ambulance company.
Well, the only reason I asked, that was a question that I was asked a couple of times about because you guys obviously get money from the towns, but then you're making a revenue stream through De Kimball on these transports. So I'm glad you clarified that because I've had people ask me and I'm like, I don't know, so.
Yeah, and, and like I said, we.
So it's still, so you still, and you've gotten legal advice, so obviously.
Yeah, absolutely.
So you still just do the form nine ninety and everything is documented in one place? And then you just separate the four different.
Yeah, that's all in-house for, for us. Essentially, I break it apart each year in the, in the books. It's all in one budget. But, you know, we break it apart to see what we're spending where and, and why. Obviously some of it, like how do you split the mortgage apart? Right, I just did it three ways. That's the only way I can do it. The fuel is broken apart a little bit different. You know, the, the, the utility bills is more or less three ways. Pofford has her own building that they pay for. The ambulances, it was, you know, we dedicate technically, it should be three ambulances to the town of Killingley because we, we have a backup ambulance, right? And, and how, so two ambulances to, to, yeah, to NICAG, not NICAG, to De Kimball, two to Pofford, three to, to Killingley. So that's our seven ambulances.
Now, Killingley's your busiest town, right?
Correct.
Yeah. Can you just get us the numbers for twenty twenty-four? That you were talking about, like how many calls and all that, just so we can put that in the packet?
Yep.
Just because people ask like, well, you know, it costs this much, so just that backup data.
Absolutely.
Thank you.
So the budget is actually broken up not by quarters, by a third?
It depends on what it is. So the, like the administrative costs are by a, a quarter because of the four different programs. But like the mortgage and utilities are a little bit different. And like I said, the ambulances, because the town of Killingley is more, is the busiest, we, we have more, we, you know, before we expanded anywhere, we had four ambulances in town of Killingley. You know, we were running four ambulances before we, we started providing service to Pofford. And then we took on the three towns out that way and we added another ambulance. So in theory, you know, five years, six years ago, you had four ambulances. You actually went backwards because you're only paying towards three. But you have access to seven. And this is something that I, I, I've said to many different people. You know, before we had four ambulances because if one broke down or two broke down and you had a standby or something, you'd, you'd be in a tight spot. Now I have seven, we have seven ambulances that we can move around to help. If one breaks down, we can pull it from somewhere else to, to help whatever company, whatever program is in need of that ambulance at that moment. You know, so you have more equipment. And that, that's the whole idea of, of what we do and, and combining the towns, you know, the three towns and combining the NICAG program, putting it all together. Is the more services, and you guys know this, the more services that you put together, the, the more you have available. And then above that, like the manpower, if, if somebody calls out, I'm more likely to now to get coverage rather than me coming in because I have, we're up to almost seventy employees between the part, full-time and part-time employees. You know, so now I have that ability. And something that benefits you, the nine one one side, is that if we do run short, the first thing we do is pull the transfer truck and, and pull that off the road and, and split that manpower back to the nine one one service. Because we will not let the nine one one go without the ambulance. So it's a benefit to, to us here, well, it's, it's a benefit to me. That just means I don't come in as more, as often as I used to. Because, you know, five years ago, four years ago, I, I was doing a lot of shifts when we were low on manpower and, and we didn't have enough of a pool to pull from. And if we, if somebody called out last minute, I would come in to cover until we found somebody. Now, I don't have to come in to cover until we find somebody. I can drop the transfer truck, have them cover nine one one until we find somebody. You know, and, and, and move the schedule around that way. So that, the, the transfer program really has helped us a lot in, in doing what we're doing. It hurts us in some ways too. It's not the, it's not the, the excitement that people join an ambulance corps to, to go to. But it is still serving your, your community. And that's, like I said, that's why I, I continue to do it. I, I, I came here to be part of a nonprofit volunteer organization. Volunteers, we all know, especially in what KB does now, it, it just really isn't possible. Otherwise still try to, to find a way to make, to integrate volunteers into it. And we do have some junior members that are volunteers and actually some, I'll, I'll say senior members that want to volunteer. So we're going to make that kind of stuff happen. But to volunteer to, to staff an ambulance, we can't, we can't do that anymore. Because I have, during the day, there's four ambulances on the road staffed. And we regularly put six ambulances on the road when, when it hits the fan and we have multiple calls. So, you know, we, we had an incident in Thompson recently that we sent three ambulances, five paramedics, and we still had an ambulance in Killingley and still had an ambulance in, in Pofford covering our nine one one system. So like we were able to do that because of who we are, you know. So, and that's, you know, part of what you guys put together. And part of what Killingley put together, part of what Randy, Randy Dagger put together.
Go ahead, Ken.
As many calls as you're doing and all that there, how's the age of the ambulances? How are you going to replace them?
Well, that, that's part of these budgets. Like we, in the past, before I took over, and even the first few years, the, the capital replacement wasn't planned. It was if we have enough money at the end of the year, we'll figure out what we're going to buy next. Now we're trying to plan that. So the ambulances are getting old. We, we hope to be able to replace one every year. And that way it's about eight years. I gotta remember how many ambulances I have. I guess we do have eight ambulances now. We, we have eight ambulances now. So when, every eight years, you know, we, the ambulance is replaced. That's our goal. The fly cars, we're pushing for one every, one every year. We have four fly cars, so every four years. We put about, that, that's a different program, but we put about fifty thousand miles a, a year on those fly cars. So two hundred thousand is about enough, enough of those. So, so that's our goal is to replace an ambulance and a fly car every year utilizing the capital, the capital budgets.
What's, what's your lead time on an ambulance?
If we have one spec to, to us, it's about eighteen months. So we, we are going to start.
Oh no, fire trucks, three.
Three years, yeah, almost. There are some out there that are generic ambulances that we could purchase and would be able to probably get them within like four months or five months on the road. But if we're going to order like a Lifeline, that's, to me, that's the best one out there. The last one took probably closer to twenty months for us to get. We got that in, in January or something. Recent, recently we finally got that in.
So the lifelines, you can alternate between BLS or ALS again?
All, all of the ambulance, we're certified to run all of our ambulances at either level. And it just, it, it depends on what gear we put in it. So the paramedics have two bags and a cardiac monitor that we. So the paramedics have, uh, two bags and a cardiac monitor that we can move between vehicles. As long as the base vehicle has the appropriate stuff. So the BLS ambulance has to have all the BLS supplies in it. And if we bring those two bags and the cardiac monitor with us, we can make it an ALS ambulance. Uh, the same with the fly car. The fly car, uh, has to have, um, a base amount of equipment in it. They call it the R one equipment. Um, it has to have all that R one equipment in it. And then when we put the paramedic gear in it, uh, it increases it to a paramedic level car. Um, and so that's how the, 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 the fly cars are all certified at the paramedic level.
I would just like to say it was a couple of bumpy years. But just thank you for everything you guys do.
Thank you.
You do a great job. I've never heard any complaints about the service from KB. And it, it looks like you guys are on a good trajectory.
Thank you.
Thank you.
So I know one of the concerns when you started taking over the transfer program, uh, for Day Kimball was going to be if you were going to have to turn down any nine one one calls and, and have to rely on mutual aid. Have you seen that happening at all?
No.
Okay.
Um, it, it definitely is the opposite. Um, and, and that's something that I, I still take flak for. Um, but I, I set it up that the nine one sys, nine one one system is the nine one one system. They don't do transfers. Those, those crews that are scheduled to be nine one one are scheduled, are nine one one crews. Um, even if they're at the hospital and there's a patient coming back to Davis Place, I don't let them do that call. Uh, logistically, it's insane. Um, but if, if something happens where i- in my, in my brain, and, and a lot of people disagree with me. So if they take that call, yes, we have the transfer ambulance here in Killingly. But now a nine one one call goes out, they take that call and it gets pushed, they get sent down to Norwich with that. Um, and now there's another transfer that was supposed to go because, but because they're in Norwich, they can't do that transfer. When am I supposed to take that nine one one truck and keep it as transfers until the, it, it just doesn't make sense? So I have always said, the nine one one crew is the nine one one crew, period. They don't do transfers. When you're scheduled on that truck, that is your, that is your duty. The transfer crew, on the other hand, if they're available and there's a nine one one call that needs coverage, they take the call. And we will push transfers, we'll slow them down, um, push the transfers back, um, because they were on the nine one one call. We get in a lot of trouble for that as well. But, um, I definitely, uh, eh, you know, as I said, logistically, it's crazy to think that you have an ambulance at the hospital and the patient's going back to, to Davis Place. It's a fifteen-minute trip, but it's not just a fifteen-minute trip. You know, you got to load the patient, you got to make sure the paperwork is correct, you got to make sure that, and if you just keep it separate, to me, it works better. Yes, logistically, mileage on the ambulance, this and that. It, it, it's, uh, it's probably the wrong thing to do. But to me, it makes it run a lot smoother than trying to balance those ambulances back and forth between the programs and end up dropping a call because somewhere in between, they were passing the wrong way, right? Um, and, and doing that, I think, I think it runs flawlessly the way, the way it is. Um, and we cover more calls, both on the transfer side and on the nine one one side, doing it that way.
And I can appreciate that. In, in my field of work, you get different level technicians. You don't want to have an A-level tech doing an oil change. And even though he may have ten minutes before his next job comes up and you got an oil change sitting in a parking lot, you don't want to put him on that and then push back the other co, the other job that you can't have the oil change guy do the job that was lined up for the A-tech that was coming in afterwards. So I can definitely appreciate that and understand why you would want to keep that dedicated to its use and not shift back and forth. Because from my field of work, that can become a, a complete scheduling and logistic nightmare.
Yeah, exactly.
Any other comments or questions? Uh, Chief, I'd like to thank you for coming tonight and spending this time to explain things to us. Um, the only other thing that, suggestion I would have, there was a couple of spots in the proposed budget. Just the way it was put together, it got a little bit confusing. And I'll point out one for, for example. Um, when I was looking at, like, uh, either one of them, where you had the, um, the total for income line after the, the four-ten Thompson, uh, revenue.
Yep.
You've got, on that line, you had the total for income on the left column and the right column. But then you go down to the next part when you were under expenses. And then it wasn't, like, the total for payroll was only listed in the right column, not the left. So when I started looking at that, it took me a minute to realize, oh, wait, that's just, it got put in there twice instead of getting put in once like it did in the other spots. Um, another piece would be, um, I know it was brought up that you had, um, mentioned how much the mortgage was and numbers came through less. If, when you present something to, like this to us, if you could have what the budget was, um, in a sense, proposed, and then what actual was. Because things happen, like, like you talked about, you split the mortgage a little bit different, um, stuff like that. So it may make this conversation we're having tonight, next year, a lot quicker. Um, and it's easier when we're getting questions from the public to say, oh, yeah, this is why. Um, or if you have an increase, if there was a big increase in, um, office supplies, where, oh, well, we had to go out and buy all this equipment. Um, ju- just a little brief description maybe on a, on a separate page as to when you have major increases, why these major increases were. Just to kind of make it easy for, for everybody involved.
Absolutely.
I appreciate that.
And, and your, your budgets are audited on a regular basis?
Every year, our accountant, um, does an audit and they do a financial report to give to my board that my board reviews, um, over what I've done.
And then those nine nineties are, are very.
Yeah, they're aligned. And if they're a couple of years behind, I'm willing to, to send them in. I can, I can send last year's. It would be, like, right now, we're working on the twenty, I know they're working on the twenty-four because they, they asked me all the questions and whatnot.
Yeah, well, twenty-four isn't due until May.
Right.
The nine ninety is due in May. So they wouldn't have the twenty-four filed, it would be the twenty-three.
Right, so.
That would be there.
And they can, they can have an autom, they can, that works. They can have an automatic extension, too, so they, one hundred and eighty days till November, so. Yeah, that was just a question I got, so.
Yeah.
I don't know, you have so many.
No, we are, we are still a five oh one C three and volunteer board of directors and uh, putting everything back into the company is, is what we're doing.
Well, you're doing a hell of a job.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks, Steve.
All right, so at this point, we'll move on to our deliberations on the budget. So I know, um, there's been certain things that were discussed. Um, I will throw out some, um, line items with potential cuts. I will throw out one at a time. Um, and I would say we vote on each one as we go through. So I will entertain a motion, uh, to cut two thousand dollars from line fifty-two sixty-two Eastern Connecticut Conservation District. Um, can I get a motion to do that? Motion was made by Ms. Barclay, is there a second?
Second.
Second by Mr. Whitehead. Um, discussion, questions or comments? Yes. That is under, for those at home that are asking, it's Human Services Subsidies, Eastern Connecticut Conservation District. Seeing no discussion, all who's in favor, say aye.
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 Aye. Opposed? Abstentions? Motion carries.
So, so can we make a comment about that?
Yes.
So, so I think the reason this one came up on the table, um, I had questioned myself is because I looked at last year's book and this year's book, and it says there's thirty-six towns served. And when you go to the budget for the fiscal year for both, now, it says thirty-six towns. Municipal funding is ten thousand dollar total. So Killingly is paying twenty percent of that. And I went through the website, I looked, I couldn't figure out why the other thirty-six towns weren't contributing. Like, it just didn't make sense to me. So that's the only reason I'm in, I'm a no. And maybe for next, maybe they can explain that. I don't understand that.
Thank you. All right, next one we'll go on to, um, where are we in this one? Uh, we'll do line fifty-three one eight UCFS. Um, I'll entertain a motion to, uh, remove forty-eight thousand, five hundred and eighty-three dollars from that line.
I'll make that motion.
Motion has been made by Ms. Barclay, second by Ms. Murphy. Discussion, question or comments? Seeing none, all who's in favor, say aye.
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 Aye, opposed? Abstentions? Motion carries. Um, next, we'll move on to line item five zero three one seven. Killingly Housing Authority. I will entertain a motion to remove thirty-one thousand, four hundred dollars from that line. Motion's ma, been made by Mr. Whitehead. Is there a second? Seconded by Ms. Murphy. Uh, discussion. Um, this I will speak a little bit to. Uh, Killingly Housing Authority was looking for thirty-one thousand, four hundred dollars for a chairlift. Um, or, excuse me, two chairlifts. Um, we're not saying we, we don't want to do this. Um, this is, this was a matter of discussion with the town manager on the ability to move this. Um, there's a possibility to move it to capital rather than coming out of, being in this line item and hitting mill rate. Um, and I believe I also heard something said that there might be an opportunity to get grant funding for, for it as well.
Uh, so what we did was, we were able to move this, um, as there was another requested change to the projected utilization of capital funds. Um, and so, um, we were able to move this to unfun, uh, to the un, unallocated capital. Um, so it'll be funded through that as opposed to funded through the mill rate.
Thank you. Any questions, comments regarding this?
Now, you said something about a grant. We're using capital, but.
Yeah, we would just use capital. I don't know that there would be necessarily an eligible grant at the moment, but we, we would, we would seek that if there wasn't enough capital funding. The most recent grants that we've applied for, for the housing authority at the state level have been denied. They've been funding all the housing authorities on the other side of the state.
Unfortunately, yeah.
So it would definitely delay implementation of this significantly. By doing it through on the unallocated capital, then you would be able to get it done more readily.
Thank you. Any other questions, comments? Seeing none, all who's in favor, say aye.
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 Aye, opposed? Abstentions? Motion carries. Move on in the agenda. Uh, next item up would be line item five zero two nine six. Access Agency, I will entertain a motion to reduce that line item by fifteen hundred dollars. Motion. Motion has been made by Mr. Whitehead, seconded by Mr. Kattula. Discussion? Seeing none, all who's in favor, say aye.
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 Aye, opposed? Abstentions? Motion carries. We'll now move on. At this point, I'll, I'll almost, I'll open up for discussion on this one, um, just to see where we're at. I, I know there had been, uh, concerns over the information we had received from KB Ambulance. There seemed to be some discrepancies in the, um, budget request we had received. Seeing how, uh, Chief was here explaining a lot of things, clarified a lot of things. Um, I don't know if there's still that same appetite for any kind of reduction in that or not.
I would pass and keep it fully funded, or as requested at the two fifteen.
I'd have to agree with, uh, with Mr. Kattula on that. Um, KB Ambulance, I think Killingly is such a heavy lift for them. Uh, last year, they, they seem to keep local people uh, that could go other places and make much more money that are dedicated to the town of Killingly. So, uh, I'm all for keeping them fully funded.
I think there should be a prerequisite that, you know, we have a better, a better budget. Like, if you can, if you could compare it to the towns, like I was trying to break out what the, what we pay per, you know, per, per call, per town. What is the breakup of the town, you know what I mean? It, 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 it just adds transparency to what you're doing. You know what I mean? Not that we second guess you, but it's the townspeople, if they see a lot of these numbers, they're not going to understand how it all plays out. If you have transparency, you say, you know, because you look at, you, you take your, you take your, your payroll expenses times four. It doesn't, y- you just have six hundred and eighty-two thousand in there. A lot of people aren't going to know what that actually entails. You know what I mean? If you take your seventy employees, we're going to some are part-time, some aren't. I mean, it's only forty grand a year. So I, I think if you just spell it out a little more and put a, make it more in-depth, it's easier to consume than just, you know what I mean? It's just, I, I think if you break it out, it would just be more helpful.
And I concur with Mr. Whitehead. Um, I'll be honest, I, when I looked over it and I saw an increase in a line item, uh, for office supplies from ninety-five hundred dollars to twenty-eight thousand, five hundred dollars, seeing a nineteen thousand dollar increase in office supplies without any kind of explanation, I kind of balked at that number. Um, a- and that, that was one reason why I was considering, that was the reason I, I was considering a cut on this, was seeing that line item itself right there with no explanation. Um, a- and that's why I spoke to the chief earlier when he was, um, going over this and gave us a little bit more information that I think next year going fo, and going forward, um, anytime there's a big increase in a line item, a little bit of an explanation and description as to why goes a long way. Um, not just with the council looking over it, but also helping us with our ability to explain to our, our taxpayers and our residents that this is why this increase is here. Um, it, it helps to get council members behind your budget if we can explain why we're getting behind your budget.
And I also have to agree with Andy that we need a total in how each of the line items are distributed between the three or four entities for transparency.
Thank you.
Some would Mr. Kattula as well.
Okay. All right.
I concur.
Okay, all right. So that one will, the line fifty-two seventy-five KB Ambulance will stay where it's at. The, one of the other things that did come up was line item fifty-two seventy-three, uh, Day Kimball Home Care is requesting twelve thousand dollars. Uh, Ms. Gloria, were you able to get any more information on that one today?
Um, as to whether or not that is legislatively required, I don't, I did not find any legislative requirements around that. Um, but, um, I didn't have a lot of time to do a huge amount of research.
Thank you. So I will entertain a motion to reduce line item fifty-two seventy-three, uh, a reduction of twelve thousand dollars.
I'll make that motion. I'll make that motion.
Motion's been made by Mr. Whitehead, seconded by Ms. Barclay. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed?
No.
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 I'm actually going to have to go with a roll call vote on that one. I wasn't sure if it was, it was, seemed to be 5-4, but I wasn't sure which way it went.
Mr. Cottula?
No.
Ms. Tick Barclay?
Yes.
Ms. Wakefield?
No.
Mr. Whitehead? Ms. George?
No.
Ms. Murphy?
Yes.
Mr. Jim Batista?
No.
Mr. Grandowski?
No.
Mr. Anderson?
Yes.
That fails 5-4. Thank you. Next thing up would be line item 50-274, United Services. I know we had a discussion earlier with, about this.
The senior center? In the seniors, not United Services.
You haven't done the United Services one yet. He hasn't gotten to the senior center.
Yeah, 276 is the senior center.
Oh, I thought it said 274, sorry. I meant to say 50-274, United Services, has a request of $13,314. Ms. Gloria, I know we spoke about this earlier. Were you able to find anything out as far as how much of that is mandated, if there is any kind of breakdown that we can go through on that or not?
I didn't really have the ability to find any specific mandated. It does appear that there is some state, some town responsibility around providing basic mental health services, which that's what this would essentially do. But it, I don't, I can't point to a specific legislation that requires a specific per capita or a specific service.
Okay.
I'll make that motion.
So we have a motion by Mr. Whitehead and a motion by Ms. Barclay, and that was to cut $13,314 from line 50-274, United Services.
Oh, United Services.
No, United Services, that was, yeah.
So...
Was that your motion or no?
Yeah.
Okay.
Okay, you're still keeping that second?
Just to clarify, okay. Discussion. Ms. Grandowski?
I can't see cutting the whole amount. But what, if there's some mandate, again, that's another issue.
Your proposal is to cover...
The proposal is to cut $13,314 from United Services. And that's the one thing, and Ms. Grandowski, I do understand it's difficult when, when you've got something where we don't know whether it's mandated or not. I know a lot of times when it has a per capita cost, typically that is something that is mandated. It's tough when something's all lumped together and you don't know what is and what isn't. And then you wonder what kind of exposure you're creating for the town by cutting a budget for something that is partially mandated.
I thought we went through this last year and it was determined that this particular section wasn't mandated. That's how I remember it.
I think last year it was lumped together with the JRB.
Yeah, but we...
Because the JRB is something that is mandated.
But it was a similar amount, and JRB was more. Because it was like, I remember it was like 12, 12 grand last year that we wanted to cut, and then we weren't sure. And, but we weren't going to cut the JV.
Yeah, yeah, because JRB you can't.
Michelle's right. We did question it last year.
JRB is the youth services line?
So if we, if we do cut something, and it's a mandated, how do we...
It goes, gets paid out of contingency.
What's that?
Gets paid out of contingency.
It was checked last year and it wasn't mandated. We had a question and, and it was voted down and it came back that this, this wasn't a mandate, and it, we didn't vote on it again.
Yeah, I'm going to say that was one of my cuts that got moved, moved to vote, so I didn't get to bring it to the floor again.
And I can't see cutting the whole amount, but again, that's one...
I was on the fence with United Services, but they serve so many families and so many kids, and we have such an epidemic of child abuse and neglect in this region, and I think what they do is really important. So, if it wa, and I know this is going to sound terrible, sorry to the public, but if it wasn't for the level of children's services that they provide, I would consider cutting part of it too. But it, it's a minimal amount, and if you look at the service they provide for kids, it's pretty important. So, no cut for me.
Any further comments?
I'd be a little cautious to reduce it all. If it does come up to be something that, I mean, we've heard both sides, that it wasn't mandated and it was, so I'm not in favor of reducing the whole amount, but a portion of it, possibly.
Maybe, maybe to take it to 10?
Yeah. I think you also got to understand that 99.9% of these services are picked up by somebody's healthcare, whether it be state healthcare, whether it be personal healthcare, insurance. I mean, this is, I think, United Services grabs more than, more than they're entitled to, is just my opinion.
They also get state and federal grants, and then that's, grants are our tax dollars, and now they're coming to the town for more tax dollars from the people.
Their salaries are astronomical, so I think we're just contributing to that. But I think to your point, cutting it all and not saving ourselves just in case, but I don't know, they call, they call it per capita out here, and they call it X amount, you know, I think it was 75%, 75 cents per person, but I think at some point in time we need to be fiscally responsible and stop the, stop the handouts. Sometimes it's got to stop somewhere.
I know Mr. Cottula, you had expressed possibly cutting it down to 10,000.
Oh, he's cutting some of it. I suggest that the 10...
Yeah, Ms. Wakefield said, and I'd be on board with a 10.
So that would be a reduction of 3,314. Ms. Grandowski, did you have a certain...
I think I could go along with that.
So we do have a motion in the second.
You have a motion in second to cut the 13,314, right? Okay. Just making sure, I understood.
So we have a motion in the second for that.
Do you need an amendment?
I, yeah, that's what I was going to go for. I will entertain a motion to amend the motion to reduce the line item 50-274, United Services, by, reduce it by $3,314 to leave $10,000 in that line item.
So moved.
Second.
So we've got a motion by Ms. Wakefield, seconded by Mr. Cottula, to amend the motion. Discussion. So now we will vote on the amendment. All those in favor of the amendment, say aye.
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 Opposed.
Nay. Yeah, we're going to need a roll call on that one.
So this is just to reduce it to...
To 10,000.
So, we're, we're voting on the amendment, not on the amendment?
Yeah, correct, on the amendment. And we're actually going to do a roll call vote, because I believe it was 4-4 with an abstention, but just to make sure.
Ms. Barclay?
No.
Oh, you, did you say no?
No, I wasn't, I'm not going to reduce it at all, so I'm a no. So do I vote no on this?
You vote yes.
So I vote yes, not to reduce, I'm so...
Okay, so you're voting, you're voting on the amendment?
Okay.
The amendment, the amendment is to bring the reduction from 13,314 to $10,000.
Okay.
Right, so the budget line item would reduce by $3,314. That's what the amendment is. That's what you're voting on right now.
So, before you vote, just so you know, if the motion fails, it goes back to the previous motion of the reduction of the whole amount.
Okay, that's where, all right, so we're two separate, okay.
So right now we're voting on the, just on the amendment.
Okay. Same.
Ms. Wakefield?
On the amendment?
On the amendment.
That's a yes.
Mr. Whitehead? Ms. George? Ms. Murphy? Mr. Jim Batista? Mr. Grandowski?
Yes.
Mr. Anderson?
Yes.
And Ms. Barclay, you voted no?
Correct, that's what I...
So the motion passes. The motion on the floor is to reduce the line item 50-274 by $3,314 to a total of Any further discussion? All those in favor say aye.
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 No.
No.
I can have a roll call.
We have three noes.
Can you say it one more time, Jason?
So, so right now what we're voting on, we're voting on reducing it by $3,314.
That was the amendment.
We voted on the amendments, and that, and that, the amendment passed.
To amend from taking away the whole...
All right, thanks. So now you're voting on the actual reduction down to $10,000.
All right, thank you.
So leaving $10,000.
I thought we just did that.
No, we voted on the amendment.
And now the amendment is the motion.
Yes, yes.
Yeah, I need real caption, not decapping.
Yeah, yeah, it's better to ask.
Because I don't want to reduce it, so I want to vote correctly.
Because this is confusing, yes.
Very confusing.
You're right, so, that's...
Okay, so say that again.
Okay, so the motion on the floor is to reduce line item 50-274 by $3,314. So, can we get a roll call, please?
Ms. Wakefield? Mr. Whitehead? Ms. George? Ms. Murphy? Mr. Jim Batista? Mr. Grandowski? Mr. Cottula? Ms. Barclay? Mr. Anderson? Motion passed. Seven to two.
Next, I will entertain a motion to reduce line item 50-276, QB Senior Citizen Center, $30,000 down to leaving $5,000 in the budget. Motion's been made by Ms. Barclay. Is there a second?
I'll second it.
Seconded by Mr. Cottula. I did have a discussion with the town manager. There are a lot of duplicate services that are already covered in Killingley, and my opinion is, our citizens shouldn't be paying for duplicate services when they're already provided here. Also the fact with the community center going to be completed and we're going to be moving there, that gives the town of Killingley a lot, a lot greater opportunity to have more senior programs in town, rather than our seniors having to go out of town for them as well. So we have a motion in the second. Is there any more discussion?
So, you want, left us five, five, you want to, you want to reduce it by 34,500?
Uh, no, reduce it by 30,000, down to 5,000.
Oh, okay, all right. Sorry, I'm glad I clarified that, but I, I just wanted to...
I'll just make a quick comment that I agree with Mr. Anderson, that we need to keep our resources in, in town.
Thank you. Any further comments? All those in favor say aye.
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 Opposed?
No.
Next thing I'd like to bring up is line item 50-500.
Which is in...
You have the UTV?
Yes.
That's 43-50505.
I'm trying.
It's department number 43, which is law enforcement, and it's account number 50-505.
What page is that on?
It's on page D27.
Almost there.
Yep. It's line item 50-505.
Mm-hmm.
So apparently I put too many zeros in there and left...
It's okay, it's very easy, there's lots of zeros and lots of fives. It happens to all of us.
I think at the end of this budget year.
What is, what is the reduction again?
Uh, the reduction would be for forty thousand dollars.
This was one of the ones that I had identified in the budget presentation, that perhaps the council decided not to fund this in the, but rather utilize potentially reserve funds for this, so you don't have to necessarily do it through the mill rate process.
So we'd have an option throughout the year to purchase it?
We would, we have sufficient funds within the reserve in order to purchase it.
So I'll entertain a motion to cut forty thousand dollars out of line five zero, five zero, five. Equipment, equipment non vehicular under department forty-three law enforcement. Motion was made by Ms. Barclay.
I'll second it.
Seconded by Mr. Cottula. Discussion. All those in favor, say aye.
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 Aye. Opposed? Abstentions? Motion carries. We'll now move on to on page D twenty-two. This one actually doesn't have a line item number. It's the twenty-five thousand that was designated for the two hundred and fiftieth Independence Day celebration. I will entertain a motion to remove that twenty-five thousand dollars from the budget.
I'll make that motion.
I'll second.
Motion was made by Ms. Murphy, I believe, Ms. Barclay had the second on that. Discussion.
I'll just say that this is not their regular money, they still have their regular money, this is money over the top of that. Extra, extra fireworks money. So they still have their regular fireworks money.
So just for, add a clarification, the fireworks currently, and would continue for this, for that year as well, that's all raised through fundraising, so none of that is actually in the budget. This was additional costs, would be cost to enhance that firework program without having to go to the, to the local corporates, as well as adds additional programming around the, that celebration. So that's what this, this ask was, again, they will do the same process for the normal red, white, and blue celebration. These were additional features to add to it.
Thank you. Any further discussion? We've got a motion in a second, all those in favor, say aye.
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 Opposed?
No.
Two noes, abstentions?
Roll call, call for roll call.
Ms. Wakefield and Mr. Grandowski were noes.
Never mind.
And were there any abstentions? No. Motion carries, seven to. Next item would be find it in the budget book. On page E six. The Main Street Camera Project, it's listed under Public Buildings.
E as in Edward.
E, yes.
I heard D six, and I was like, what are we cutting out of the assessors department, like?
E is in Echo six.
Got it.
Second, second line in this, under Public Buildings, is Main Street Camera Project. It had fifty thousand dollars designated. That was gonna be coming from general fund contribution. I will entertain a motion to remove that item.
I'll make that motion.
Motion has been made by Mr. Whitehead, seconded by Ms. Barclay. Discussion. One thing that's been brought up to me is, I've had a couple people who were outside of the area where these cameras would have gone, who expressed interest, well, basically said, why, why aren't you putting cameras on every business, why you're only picking and choosing which ones get it? Another comment that had made, been made to me more recently is, since all these are in the borough, why isn't the borough funding this, rather than this coming from the town? So those, those were a few of the comments I heard. Me personally, I, I do have concerns of if we were to put cameras on certain businesses, how do we say no to other businesses who come requesting afterwards? In a sense, I feel we'd be setting a precedent. I would be, me personally, I, I would support a scenario where the town paid for a server to where if the businesses wanted to put cameras that would be tied to the server, the feeds would come to the town. And then our law enforcement would have the ability to review that, to assist with investigating any incidents. And as far as that type of project, going that scenario where the town isn't paying for cameras on multiple businesses all over town, and picking and choosing who gets them and who doesn't, I'd be in favor of going a different scenario where the, where the town has the server. And then if the businesses want cameras, then they can pay for the cameras and the installations on their buildings.
Do we have any ballpark on what a server would cost?
That hasn't been a project I've asked the town manager to look into yet, so that would be it, it would definitely be substantially less than fifty thousand dollars.
I'm thinking, because maybe we would wanna amend if we had a ballpark and leave something in there for it.
I would have to talk to the, our IT network in order to be able to better understand what securities would need to be in place, and requirements around, you know, as a municipality and accepting feeds from that, we wouldn't be able to accept them from certain manufactured equipment and things like that, so that would have to really be evaluated fully, and then come before you as a separate, as a separate project for consideration, I, I wouldn't even hazard a guess around that.
I think that would be a can of worms as well, because, you know, my buildings, we have, we have cameras up that are good for thirty days, and the police are, you know, probably four or five times a year come in, and they, you know, they take their thumb drive, they take what they need, and you know, it's easily accessible for most businesses, I would think would be amenable to, to the police department, but I think I think the, the server thing with all the intricacies, like you said, if you, you have different, different, different cameras, different interfaces, it could be tough. I think if they wanted to do something like that, a flock system probably would be more practical.
Do you have any knowledge of a ballpark on a flock, something we could leave in there, just later? Okay.
Flock would be a town.
Okay.
So do we leave some money in there? For, so that we're not doing an appropriation down the road, or if we, if businesses want to sign on to this? After we get the information, do we leave money in there for a server? Like a ballpark, I don't know.
I would honestly say that, you know, you would need to do an entirely new project, and then look at maybe potentially unallocated capital funds if the town chose to go down that road, but again, there's a lot of nuances to flush out about that, there's an entire structure that would have to get put into place. That's not just a, you know, simple swap and plug and play kind of thing. Yeah, that would be completely a different, a whole completely different project than what you're looking here, so I don't know that it would make any sense for you to leave funding when you're contemplating a completely different, right, a completely different type.
Thank you. Judging by the stuff I, I don't know why my mic isn't working. Judging by the stuff I've been working on with the IT, I would suspect that if the town was gonna basically host the server, we would have to then spec out what kind of cameras we would allow them to use, so.
Yeah.
And system. So.
And yours are personal cameras that you purchased, would you mind giving us what the purchase price was?
We'd pay probably fifteen thousand per building, but that's with anywhere from thirty to forty-five day backup.
Yep, that's about similar.
So if each business was requesting that, we purchased a camera, it would be quite expensive for the town?
But that's more than one camera.
Yeah, that's more than one, that's my building, so.
Yeah.
But they were, the, the Killingley Business Association were asking for multiple cameras. They're asking for apartment buildings, they're asking for businesses on different sides, I think.
I wanna say that the total number of cameras in that package was somewhere around ten cameras for the fifty grand, which
Yeah, I, I was
It's doable, yeah.
I, I was, sorry.
Multiple DVRs as well.
Correct, it, the connection component of it, and then, and then the ultimate data, uh, storage component is the other, is the other piece.
How many terabytes we had for, it's ridiculous.
It's quite a bit.
Yeah.
It is quite a bit.
Yeah, and I, I will echo Jason Anderson's sentiment, like, I really like the idea of the cameras, but I don't wanna get us tied into, okay, you did it for this group, why wouldn't you do it for this group, like, there's no way to really not look like you're discriminating, or
I heard this class was all
Weird, yeah.
So do we get a motion in, yes, we get a motion in a second on this. Any further discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed?
No.
Abstentions? Motion carries. Now, Ms. Gloria, when you did the presentation on the highway store maintenance, you had talked about the switch over to the treated saw, I believe it was line item five zero, four, three, five.
It's not that much of an, of an increase, the eighty-six thousand is projected, that is proposed, and there is really to get us to the volume of tonnage that we use.
Yeah, my question was was there a number as to how much of that eighty-six was shifting some of it to treat its all?
Yeah, I mean, the total difference is about six thousand in difference. It's not significant.
Okay.
It's not significant at all.
Yeah, I couldn't remember whether you would mention that exact figure when you did the presentation.
It was minimal.
Thank you. Alright, next. I know we had the presentation this evening about from Matt on the road renewal project and where we're at on that. Looking, looking at the numbers in the graph, and, and seeing that we're improving roads, I definitely see how spending the money has definitely made a difference. The thing I struggle with on that is putting the one point two five million into the mill rate this year, I'm net, for me, that's, that's a huge hit, I know it's something we gotta look at transitioning in, and trying to get off fund balance.
I have a proposal around that.
Yep, I'm
Okay.
Getting there. The other thing I think about too is, while we're looking to try and transition out of making expenditures out of fund balance and get them moved into the mill rate, basically get into general government side. I look at the fact of if we're gonna be coming down in a couple years on what we're spending on roads, because what we have been spending has made an impact and improved our roads, I think that would be something we could, if we were to continue the use of general funds for road improvement, explain to when it comes time for bonding, to explain that the plan is, we're gonna start cutting back on what we're putting into the roads, which would reduce how much we're going into the general fund for roads. That being said, Ms. Gloria did work on a different scenario as far as road renewal, and if you could go over that now, please, thank you.
Sure, so two components to this, in order to be able to kinda alleviate it out of the mill rate, and I don't know about you guys, but I work better with actual sheets of paper and numbers in front of me, so let me hand out a couple of things, so that way maybe it's a little easier for everybody to follow. So, the scenario I just gave you is scenario two, and you can disregard some of the numbers on the front page, cause you guys have already gone through a lot of that, and some of those have changed, but with regards to the capital, one of the things that you can do is I'll pull your attention to the Lake Road Generating capital allocation. And if you flip to the second page, which is number two at the top, you'll see that we had coming into the current year budget, we're utilizing, we're allocating over one point five million of the pilot road, pilot funding from Lake Road Generating into the capital, as we've done, we're using the same level of funding to offset mill rate. So the proposal that you could do is you could increase, the first page shows you kinda what you went into the, into this proposal with, which we were utilizing seven hundred thousand to offset paving, if you increase that by five hundred and fifty thousand to one point two million, or one million, two hundred and fifty thousand dollars, that just removes that expense right out of the operating budget, straight over into the capital, and that alleviates part of it. The other portion that you could do is, you know, always looking for an effort to step down in the utilization of fund balance, and so if you look at the really, if you look at the second page of the other handout that I gave you, it really shows you the the A page, right, that grand summary page, and I'm just gonna have you look at just the capital section, only because you've made other decisions on other areas. But if you activate seven hundred thousand dollars of of fund balance for offsetting the pavement management plan, then you could see that your net impact to mill rate is zero. There's no impact to mill rate, this removes that completely out of mill rate, and if you look at the very next page, we did do the the fund balance scenario, so in this one, I'm reflecting the seven hundred thousand dollars for capital operations, you haven't yet discussed right now with regards to activating more fund balance utilization for operating, but if you were to activate more, instead of the five hundred thousand proposed, if you were to activate that at eight hundred thousand, then you are still, you still have a fund balance. you were to activate that at 800,000, then you are still, you still have a fund balance percentage of nineteen, over nineteen percent. So you're still in that healthy range of your fund balance, it's not significantly detrimental. You are showing to your credit rating agencies kind of a step down in the utilization of fund balance on that, and it then better achieves that softening of the mill rate impact. So I would have to recalculate based on some of the decisions you've made tonight. That would tell me what the actual mill rate impact would be with those considerations, but that would, that would fund the, that would fund the pavement management plan at 2.5 million in totality for all revenue sources to that, and not have any of it borne by mill rate.
And the percentage of the fund balance that we want to maintain is 16%?
That's the, yeah, that's the bottom, is 16%. So you're still in that healthy range of mill rate, of fund balance. And I did, yeah, that's fine.
So ultimately, the reduction to that 50501 line item would end up being?
Yeah, so that doesn't actually come out of this, that, like, that doesn't come out of that unallocated capital, it actually comes out of the constabulary reserve, so that wouldn't, that 40,000, that doesn't, is that what you were talking about?
No, the road renewal line?
Yep.
Is this, how does that affect that?
Say it again. It's late and I'm...
It's D-17, 50501.
Oh.
Road renewal, 1.25 million.
So that, all it does is that, it takes it out of the operating, so we reduce the amount that's showing up there, because we're already accounting for it in unallocated capital, right? So you don't have to reflect it in your operating expenses, because you have it in your unallocated capital that you're allocating to that within the capital. Doesn't have to, you already have it, you already have those funds pushed over to capital.
So then that line item becomes zero?
It doesn't become zero.
Well, it just drops...
It drops to 700,000, and then you utilize fund balance to offset the other 700,000. Because currently, right now, you have zero fund balance allocated for capital purposes, where in the past, you've allocated over 2 million for that. By bringing it down to 700,000, that's a very positive step to the, our capital, our credit rating agencies, they're going to see that and say, oh yes, you are actually trying to come off that utilization, that's positive. And then as far as the other part of that scenario for fund balance utilization that I have, which I had discussed with the, with the chair, was increasing the use of fund balance for operating purposes from the original proposed budget. My proposed budget showed 500,000, increasing it to 800,000, which is 50,000 more than what you did last year, but you can articulate that that's also smoothing in the motor vehicle impact. And that would, that would be fine within the credit rating. It's not a significant increase to that.
Mr. Chair, is there any chance to take like a five-minute executive session or something?
Only thing that could be done would be if the Republicans on the council wanted to recess to caucus.
I wouldn't mind just like a little five-minute thing.
Or the other possibility is the fact that it's 10:40 at night.
Okay.
We could table this item, come back to this, and then move on to one of the other ones, which we should be able to wrap up before 11 o'clock. All right, so the next item would be law enforcement line 50180, and I'm just trying to find the page I'm on that. It's on page D27, and it would be, oh, it's in there somewhere, line item 50180. On constabulary. Ms. Clorio had spoke about the possibility of holding off on hiring the ninth officer. That would bring us some savings. It wouldn't be a full year, because the position would only be part year. It's something we could definitely have in next year's budget to try and get back on track, trying to get up to the 10 officers, which was the original plan when the council established the constabulary. So that, that amount that it would reduce is actually in one of the handouts that we just received.
So it's 69,500 from that, and at the same time, you would also reduce 7,987 dollars from fringe benefits.
Could you repeat that, Mary? That's different than...
69,500 from the law enforcement budget?
Yeah.
And 7,987 dollars from employee fringe benefits.
Benefits, okay. So this is not the 10th officer, this is the ninth.
So this, however you want, the, really, actually, our ninth officer, we're onboarding right now, but he is our new hire. And that one, we are paying, we are covering that one out of the constabulary reserve, because he's going to be going to the academy and all that kind of stuff. This is what would be considered your, your remaining lateral vacant position, that has been vacant now for more than one year. And we, you know, there's, I've talked in our previous meeting, there are several reasons that this makes, that we've been struggling for attraction for that one. There's also not really a big group of retirees that are coming out at this point in time, so it probably makes sense for this year to be the pause year on attracting any additional laterals.
Sure, so when the other one, when the other one comes on board, that, this will, this is really the 10th?
Correct.
Yeah, okay.
Correct. We're not going to be, yes.
Any other thing I just wanted to bring up, as I did talk to Ms. Clorio? In the budget book on page D27, under description, the second paragraph, it does say, if you look at the wording, the proposed law enforcement budget includes 10, but then it's parentheses of nine full-time constables. I just did speak with Ms. Clorio, and it is supposed to be nine.
Yes, this budget here actually represents nine officers.
Yes.
That's what's presented in this budget, and the operating budget is nine. This would reduce the operating budget to reflect eight officers.
Okay.
Because the ninth one is your new hire, your brand-new academy one, which is paid for out of the constabulary reserve, not out of this department budget.
All right, so I will entertain a motion to reduce line item 50180, 69,500. And then also on the employee benefit side, reflective reduction of 7,987. And just for the public, this isn't us cutting any existing positions, this is just us putting a pause on filling a position that's been vacant. Motion was made by Ms. Barclay, seconded by Ms. George. Is there any further discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Abstentions? Motion carries. So Ms. Clorio, on this sheet you gave us of proposed budget adjustments, legal services, probate expense, 50216, the reduction of 1,239. Can you just go over that?
Yeah, that's the thing I had indicated, probate sent their actual budget confirmed documentation after we had already published, so their actual amount is less than what we had originally estimated, so you can take that savings.
So I'll entertain a motion to reduce line item 50216, legal services, probate expense, reduce it 1,239. Motion has been made by Ms. Barclay, seconded by Mr. Cattula.
The handout Mary just sent, gave us.
But in the book, it's going to be under legal expenses.
Department, it's O3, so it's going to be on page D3, and that is line item 50216, probate expense.
Thank you. Any further discussion? All those in favor say aye.
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 Aye. Opposed? Abstentions? Motion carries.
Can we get a tally of what we've taken off so far?
We'll get that for you.
Thank you.
Out of the town cuts?
Yep, that's what we're working on.
So far, we've taken out 260,523.
Thank you. One of our members had expressed an interest of the Republicans on the town council being able to caucus regarding the pavement management, considering that and the fact that we're now at 10:45, 10:43 at night. I will entertain a motion, and trying to remember this, we're not... I had a request to take a recess of the meeting, so we can go into a caucus to discuss the road. So it was floated out there, and I am open to it if there's interest, and what we could do is reconvene tomorrow, because we are scheduled to reconvene tomorrow. And rather than going into a caucus and having everyone wait for us to come back out to go further, and we can reconvene this tomorrow for additional cuts. Yeah, hopefully an hour tomorrow.
I'm good either way, an hour tomorrow or, you know, 10 minutes now.
Well, we'd have to come, we'd have to extend, we'd have to extend the meeting.
For 15 minutes or something? I mean, I...
We'd, well, probably be longer than that. I really think it would be.
Fresh eyes might be...
Yep.
Okay.
Yeah. So we will be, and Ms. Clorio, correct me on this wrong, we're not adjourning the meeting.
No, you can adjourn this one, we have a, but we have a meeting scheduled for, so you would adjourn this meeting and then you, you start a new meeting tomorrow.
Okay.
Yeah, you just adjourn.
All right, so I will entertain a motion.
Make a motion to adjourn.
Motion was made by Mr. Cattula, seconded by Ms. Barclay. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Abstentions? This meeting is adjourned.